Good evening, everyone, and I apologize for being five minutes late. We had a closed session. We had a special meeting, and I'm going to report that we gave corrections to staff during the closed session. So, I am -- the fire chief doesn't know this, but I'm going to ask the fire chief if he would leave us in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of our country.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Good job, Chief. Thank you very much. Welcome, everyone. We're glad you're here. And just -- we're going to do roll call in just a minute, but I'm just letting you know that on item number nine E, which is a budget item, we're going to move it to the top of the department recommendations. So if you're here for the budget item, we're going to try to take care of it as soon as possible. So, Madam President.
The City Council welcomes --
We're going to do roll call.
Oh. Councilmember Burton.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Here.
The City Council welcomes input from the audience. If there is a matter of business on the agenda that you are interested in, you may address the council when this matter is considered. If you wish to speak on a matter that is not on the agenda, you may do so at this time. In order for everyone to be heard, please limit your comments to three minutes per person. The Brown Act regulations do not allow action to be taken on audience comments in which the subject is not listed on the agenda. Members of the public are asked to observe the rules of decorum. While the City Council welcomes public criticism of policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency, behavior that disrupts, disturbs, impedes, or renders infeasible the orderly conduct of the meeting, and that includes but is not limited to the use of profanity, slurs, yelling from the audience, threatening remarks, physically threatening conduct, or physical or verbal displays of disrespect, will not be tolerated, and the individual will be removed immediately.
Thank you very much. We are going to start with, is there anybody who would like to comment on anything on the agenda? Or is there anybody who would like to comment on anything that is on the agenda that needs to leave early?
I would.
Right here, young lady. Please state your name, and thank you for being here. Don't be nervous. Pretend we're not here.
Hi, my name is Emma Holsy, and I'm this year's Willis FFA reporter. I would like to talk to you about our annual tree lighting ceremony that we have partnered with the City of Willett for the past two years, and we are looking forward to this year's event also. I have some flyers with signup forms if anybody is interested. We appreciate the city for working with us again this year.
Great. So what is the date of the tree lighting ceremony?
It will be December 13th at 7:00 PM.
And it will be at?
It will be, huh?
At the park.
Across the street. Snyder Park. Thank you for being here. Good public speaker, so please make sure that we have the flyers, and we will also have the public -- or the city clerk posts those on the city webpage. Thank you for being here. Good job. Is there anybody else who would like to talk about any item which is not on the agenda? I'm going to close the public comment. It is closed. All right. Moving on. I don't think our supervisor, John Haschek, is here.
He is not.
So we'll go straight to the fire chief for the second time in this meeting. Okay?
Hey, it's kind of a big deal.
They heard you were coming.
How's everybody doing tonight? Good. So around the firehouse, we're gearing up for the harvest moon in the haunted firehouse. We're going to kind of separate the two, try to have a little kid-friendly area in there. Last year was real crazy. There was a lot of kids screaming and running out of that firehouse. So we're going to try to tone it down for the kids, and then we'll get the adults. We continue to provide EMTs for the high school youth football games. Secretary Michelle is still in the process of looking for grants or donations for the smoke CO detectors. They average anywhere from $40 to $60, depending on the combination, smoke and CO. And then we have a -- it was 55 and older, and then five and under. You can come to the firehouse and pick one of those out, or as many as you'd like. So we're just trying to get that replenished. She's also looking for the bounce house, educational bounce house. It's around $6,000, and that'll teach the children about fire and home safety. They go crawl on the thing, and there's smoke, and ovens in the kitchen, and stuff like that, so trying to get -- she's been trying to get that for a while, actually. Training consisted of various ventilation tactics and stinger operations for commercial vehicles. We get a big rig in town that could send an accident, we'll pump the tanks off, and it takes a little bit of training on our end for that. EMT refresher was trauma assessment, and that's splitting, obtaining vitals, patient packaging, and then considering the MOIs of the injury, the mechanism of injury for the MOI, vehicle accidents, fall from ladders, and stuff like that. Community training consisted of fire extinguisher training for the Mendocino College staff. And we're also bringing an engine to a head start for the little ones to discuss fire safety and stuff like that. If it's kind of warm outside here, you'd usually spray them with the hose and kind of teach them a little bit about that. So if anybody's interested in extinguisher training, come by the firehouse, and we can schedule that for you guys, you own a business or something like that. Usually, we just do it off donations. We'll come out there, we got a little propane prop. And as of the current date, we have responded to 461 calls for service. We actually got hammered over this weekend, but I'm informational. My reminder is always for visible addresses. Kind of running into some issues in the Skow Road area. The addresses don't correspond. We get a notification from Howard Forest, and it drops a pin in crazy locations, so in the event of a fire, we're going to find it eventually. The medicals are a little tough at 9:00, 3:00 in the morning. We got us the ambulance and some other fire engines trying to find those addresses, so when time matters, it's good to have that green reflective address. October 9th, we're going to be participating in the wildfire and insurance forum. That's going to be at the new CCC camp. The hours for that are 5:30 to 7:30, and we'll have a booth. You can kind of meet, greet firefighters, ask questions, purchase some shirts, get some information on volunteering, and stuff like that. Other than that, that's all I have. Thank you guys for having me.
All right. Is there any public expression relating to the wonderful job that the Fire Department's doing?
Fire Department? Yeah, there you go. Cool. Thank you guys. I appreciate that. The volunteers, appreciate it as well. It's a lot of hard work and dedication and time out of their lives to hit the training, the meetings, and then the calls for service, so thank you guys for your support. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All right. We know we have no new ordinance to enact. We're going to talk about the reading of an ordinance, but we'll talk about the consent calendar, and I'm going to pull item number D as in David, the city response to the grand jury response off, so we can have a discussion. But we have a consent calendar of city council minutes. We have signatures regarding the -- our bank account, and we have resolution authorizing specific city staff to transfer funds between local agency investment fund and savings bank of Mendocino County.
Mayor, can I pull five C's?
Five C's in Charles?
Yes.
Okay. We pulled C's in Charles, D's in David. We have A and B.
And then the -- I don't see the warrants on there. Am I missing them? Oh, accounts payable.
That's the next item.
That's the next item.
Okay. So is there anybody who wants to make a motion for A and B?
I will make a motion for A and B.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion to approve the minutes, and also to authorize the signature -- a change of signatures for the checking account. Is there any public comment regarding these two items? Public comment's closed. We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Yes.
Almane.
Aye. All right. So we'll move on to the resolution -- the option of resolution authorizing specific city staff to transfer funds. Go ahead.
The only concern I have is that in this past year or years, money's been moved that I don't think the council was really made aware of, or maybe they were in the finance committee, and I would love that be -- even if it's routine, that we get notified as a council when we are moving money between our investment.
That's a fair -- that's a fair request.
And I don't know if that could be either wanted as a motion, or if it could come back again as part of that discussion. I mean, I'm willing to pass it tonight, but I would like it to come back that if there is movement made between the lay fund and staff has to move money around, even if it's a routine, that the council just be made aware of that.
Okay. So in our packet, we have the resolution, and if you would like to add that if there's any transfer of funds, the council will be notified at the next regular city council meeting, that's not an unreasonable request to add. Council, is that okay?
Yes.
All right. Any public comment on this? Hearing none. Public comment's closed. Go ahead.
So I would like to make that motion, that the resolution be amended to reflect that the council would like to be notified at the next meeting when those funds are accessed or moved in whatever amount.
At the next available -- the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
You want it done after the fact rather than before the fact?
I think it may -- I don't want to hamper things, but I also don't want to be not in the know.
Okay. Just start out with being in the know.
Yeah.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Councilman Burton will second. We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Yes.
Almane.
Aye. All right. D's and David, the city -- the grand jury response. I'm going to go to council on this.
Thank you. The 2024-25 Mendocino County Civil Grand Jury issued a report following an investigation on -- the report date is June 30, 2025. It's entitled -- the report's entitled "He Believes the Toxic Culture in the City of Willett's Workplace." It's perhaps a 10, 15-page report. It discusses the fact that a confidential complaint was sent to the civil grand jury regarding the workplace culture of the City of Willett. The grand jury decide -- discussed it, decided, and voted to pursue an investigation. We have the results of their investigation, in which they made several findings and recommendations. And there's a deadline fast approaching, I believe it's on the 29th of this month, for the city council to pass a resolution approving the execution and delivery of its response to the findings and the recommendations. The mayor appointed an ad hoc committee, council members Gonzalez and Almane, who discussed the matter and put together a draft response to both the findings and recommendations. That's before you, and so it would be appropriate, season to consider that draft report.
Great. All right. There is -- I don't know if there's a lot of public comment. I am going to open up the public comment now. We're going to discuss it, and then I'm going to open it up to public comment again. So, right now, is there any public comment on the grand jury response? Nikki, by all means.
My name is Nicole Cardlock. Sadly, I didn't get a lot of time to look at your responses. It was literally just given to me before we started. So I wrote a couple things down really, really quick. Two F1, that you don't know who the employees -- I mean, that's normal. It was confidential who got interviewed and who said what. Every employee that works currently for the city knows who left and why. Did any of you ask anybody? Or the ones that maybe left are not comfortable saying, but I can name you everybody who left, why, but I won't, because I respect their privacy. Two F2, concerns about the city manager were brought up to city council by multiple employees, upper management and on lower levels, over the last four years. So for the council to say that they did their job, I know for a fact that the previous mayor had a conversation with me personally about some issues that went on. So clearly, I'm sorry, the back then city council did not do their job. F5, if the city council conducted the annual performance review of the city manager, who was asked to provide information on how he was doing? To my knowledge, the ones that worked under him or with him did not get a chance to put any import input in. How can there be a review done if somebody doesn't know the job he's doing? So that's --
Okay. Thank you, Nikki. Thank you very much. And just for clarification, the city manager that you're talking about doesn't work for the city anymore.
No.
So -- and the employees that don't work here anymore.
Yep.
They don't work for it here anymore.
Yep.
And so we're somewhat at a stymie of what to say when the people don't work here anymore.
Right.
So, thank you, but I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Who else would like to comment on the grand jury report? Please, come up. Okay, I'm going to close public comment. We are going to talk about it, and then we are going to open up public comment again. So if you have something to say, please, I want you to write it down so you don't forget about it, and then you will have an open session again to discuss it. Okay? To the council. We have a recommendation from the attorney based on the ad hoc from you, from Gonzalez and Almane's regarding our response to the grand jury, which is due at the end of this week, or early next week.
Well, I just want to say that we weren't the ones that interviewed these folks, so in our -- and again, Vice Mayor Almane's with council and with some input from me, we prepared this, and in essence, we did not interview the said employees because it was confidential, so we -- places where we found that we had to agree with, that the grand jury found what they found, because we obviously didn't interview these employees ourselves.
So wait, so you're saying you agreed with what the city -- what the grand jury found?
Well, I think we came to the agreement that we agree that they found that.
Okay.
Which is all the evidence we had.
Yeah.
It was going to be confirmed or denied. They said they found toxic environment. We agree that they claim that they found some.
So are we going to go through this bit by bit and go through each item, then?
No. I think overall, it was just our -- I think overall.
Acknowledgement.
Yeah. Acknowledgement was that we heard what the grand jury was saying. We didn't feel the need to respond to the cat. We just wanted to make sure that we understood what they were saying, and that we were taking what they were saying seriously, and then we responded appropriately.
Okay. Anything else? Bruce, do you think?
No. I'm -- I read this, and I'm satisfied with it.
Larry?
I'm satisfied.
Okay. So I want to say several things. Oh, wait. We're going to open public comment in just a minute, please.
No. We can't hear. If we can't hear anything you guys are saying.
We can't hear anything that we're saying.
No, you have to speak into the mics. No.
Okay. All right. So, all right. So I apologize. We will speak louder. Okay? Crowded room. Thank you very much.
I haven't fixed the microphones. They're not even working.
The microphones are strictly for the video, it's not for the speaker system.
Oh.
Sorry.
Go home and watch it on TV.
All right. So I do want to say a couple things. First of all, I want to thank the grand jury. The grand jury spent a lot of hours based on City of Willett's employee complaints, and the grand jury appeared to take this extremely seriously. But now we're in a situation where several individuals -- not several. There are individuals that are discussed in the -- not by name, that are apparently were the focus of some of the city employees talking to the grand jury, and those individuals or one individual doesn't work for the city anymore. And so we're in a situation where it's rectifying a situation which appears to be rectified is a moot subject. So with that being said, is there any more public comment on this before the city council makes a motion to approve or not approve our response to the grand jury? Please. Nikki?
Sorry, I forgot one thing. I apologize.
Yeah. You have three minutes. You're good.
I got one more thing. So with this now being your response, and everything that happened with the grand jury and so on, so can the -- where can the employees now go to talk to who? And where do we go with issues? Who has taken our concern serious? So all the stuff that happened over the last four years is not happening again?
Okay. That's a very fair question. I appreciate that question. So one of the things that the city policy stated was that you talk to the personnel director. And we all know that the city right now does not have a personnel director. And the city -- we are working on that to rectify the language in that, so the person working in the personnel department technician or the city manager slash interim city manager would be the correct person to talk to, unless one of those two people is the issue.
Okay.
And if that's the issue, you talk to the other, and I will gladly -- gladly, I mean, I'm just a mayor, but if any city employee wants to discuss a situation, and they come to me, I will direct them to someone they can talk to. I don't want to go outside the realm of legal basis here, but we want to make sure that the employees know that they do have the ability and the right to talk to somebody in a situation. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nikki. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on the grand jury response? For once, going twice. Public comment is closed. To the council.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the resolution regarding the response to the jury.
Okay. So the -- you're making a motion to notify Judge Mormon of our response.
Correct.
Okay?
I will second that.
A motion in a second, and these are the two of the ad hoc committee that cited it. Is there -- to the clerk. We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Burton.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Almane.
Yes.
Almane.
Aye. Okay. So we've taken care of the consent calendar. Let's go to item number six. A as in Adam, accounts payable activity report. Look at Councilman Burton, because I know he's going to make the first comment.
Well, I do -- I just have a couple questions on the warrants, on the payables, if you'll humor me. The first one has to do with check number 41257, AT&amp;T Communications. Are these cell phones or these landlines? What is this AT&amp;T? They go to the water, general fund, general fund, airport, enterprise, three, five more general fund, wastewater enterprise.
If they're going to water and wastewater, they might be telemetry lines? There's specific lines that are used for?
Might be, but I don't -- there's also six that go to the general fund, to the successor agency. No, seven to the general fund. So I'm just asking, what did we send?
I don't think the cell phones are all there. Hard lines. I think they're a blend between the two. Something. Some.
Cell phone?
Telephone.
Telephone. Hard line telephone.
Hard line telephones, yeah.
Hard line telephones?
Yeah.
So wait a minute. Why are we paying anything for this successor agency, since this successor agency is in our rearview mirror? We don't have a successor agency.
It's $436.21 is one of them. So.
I'll get into that.
Can we look into that for the next council meeting? Can we have that discussion?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Then my next question has, again, this, this, I think, probably, well, this appears to be -- this does appear to be cell phones, and so I'm a little -- but we've got somebody that's got a $561 cellphone bill, and several of them that are in the $200 to $300 range, so it's Verizon Wireless checks number 1285.
The city clerk has a response.
When we pay the cellphone bills, they are grouped by department, so you may see their -- the 500, maybe the police department, all their cell phones together. It's not an individual line.
Okay. So to continue on with that, last month, I was curious how many cell phones we have and how much we're paying, and I went to the city clerk, and I'm not kidding you, in less than two minutes, she gave me a list. We have fewer than 40 cell phones, and we pay an average -- we -- not an average, we pay $58 per cellphone, with the exception of the
The laptops that are used.
The hotspots. The hotspots that we use for a case of a disaster, we pay a little bit more, but I got the information a lot quicker than when I tried to get the answer from the county for cell phones. But not every city employee has a cellphone, and those that do, we pay $58 per month.
And that's a special through Verizon.
Right.
That we have.
Yeah. Well, that matches with the $2,048. So then, going to Bank of America, then my question is, how many city employees have credit cards?
Credit cards? I can have that list for you after this.
Thank you. I think we need to know that at this point. Then I -- I'm just curious. SHN has three invoices here totaling $25,000. Is that the materials testing, or what is that?
The rail to trails? It might be on the rail trail. We were under contract with them for special materials testing.
Does that sound?
Yeah, that sounds like it. That's for -- that's, I think, the only thing we have under contract. We also -- oh, do you have? Got it. Right.
We also use them for engineering review for subdivision maps for some of our cost recovery projects, and then their fee gets passed on to the applicant. I don't know if that's part of that $22,000, but that's another service that we use, and I know we've signed off invoices for those services recently.
So you know this question's coming, so with what Councilman Burge has talked about, is that 100% reimbursable by Caltrans?
The materials testing for rail trails is reimbursable.
It's reimbursable. Two of the three that he mentioned are for rail trail.
Okay.
And one's professional services.
Now, when we approved that, it was not confirmed that it was reimbursable. In fact, it was specifically said that it was not reimbursable.
He didn't know at the time, but now, from what I understand, it's reimbursable. Is that right? From Caltrans?
Yeah, I believe so. I think at the time, we were uncertain.
Well, it's reimbursable if it comes in under the total amount of the
Of the project cost?
Project cost, but is it reimbursable on top of the?
Well, we're getting -- we're trying to get extra money for the project.
Yeah. I mean, to your -- to your point, Bruce, I mean, we have so much money through the Caltrans grant, and once we eat it up, we eat it up, whether we spend it on SHN or Bootleer or whatever else.
Exactly. So it still isn't -- it wasn't part of the original grant, so the only way it was reimbursable will be if it -- is that correct, Rod?
Yeah. I think it's fair to say that the project is over the construction budget at this point, and unless there's more money found through grants or somewhere else, it's not reimbursable.
Okay. So in theory, on October 15th, work on the rails to trails is going to cease for the season, is that correct?
We can do stuff that's not in the creek, but the majority...
The majority, so hopefully in November, we can get a balance of where we are in the rails to trail.
Well, we can deal with that later in the meeting, I don't need to sidetrack into that.
All right.
But I got a couple more, yep, of course. Apex Technology Management, $7,000. What is Apex Technology?
They have their IT provider. They do all the IT providing for all of our computers for this city.
Is that a flat monthly fee? Is that something I should say?
There's a flat fee and there's also individual, like, extra charges that are done when we go outside.
When you need a mill right to fix something.
When we need a rush.
Okay. So then, the BKS Law Firm has $8,000 charged to the wastewater enterprise.
They do regulatory and they're working on projects with us, yes, advisory, they're working on the work trails, they're the ones who are doing the agreement right now and working on that.
I thought that that was in the rearview mirror, I thought that work had been completed.
No, we got a, we got something we're reviewing from them right now. No, it's in process right now, yes.
Okay, well, that's new information to me. And then, Ida Bailey for accounting and audit services for $6,000.
Yes, they were working on things for the audit, the items of the audit so that we can get it done.
And what are they doing?
They were doing schedules for, they were doing schedules for the fixed assets and also the complicated accesses along with some items that were previously itemized, which was for processes such, creating processes and things like that so that we could have that available for our separation of duties in our audit testing.
Is that going to happen again next month or is, are they done?
They're pretty much done.
Pretty much, are they done?
Yeah, they're done.
And then, against the general fund for, it's not very much money, but Liebert, Cassidy and Whitmore?
Liebert, Cassidy and Whitmore are used during items that have to do with HR issues.
Okay.
I believe we have a contract with them that there's a certain amount of time through our, through REMF, I think, and then after so long, they're a specialty thing, then they pay charges.
That's all. Mr. Mayor, thank you. Okay, anybody else have any questions regarding accounts payable? Okay, moving on to building permit activity. Any public, any public comment on accounts payable? I'm sorry, any public comment? The comment is closed, so building permit activity report, it's in the agenda, business license activity report's in the agenda, is there any public comment on either one of those? Okay, moving on, we do meet concurrently as a City of Willets Planning Commission and City of Willets Successor Agency, but that will not last forever because the successor agency is not something that's going to last forever. So city manager report. And I have one thing before we get to city manager report. We talked about moving the budget to the top, right?
Correct.
I believe the majority of people, I'm asking, ask for a show of hands, are here for the zoning change by presentation by community development. So if you are here for the zoning change in the City of Willets, can you please raise your hand? Okay, if you're here for the budget, please raise your hand. Okay, we're going to take the zoning change first, Dusty, and then we're going to go to the budget, okay?
I just do them in, I mean, I think we can knock these other ones out pretty quick.
Oh, I don't know, the budget's not going to be equipped.
No, I understand that, but I'd leave it where, I just go through the...
Okay.
But your call.
All right, to the city manager, report.
In the interest of time, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I don't have anything, but the purpose of having the budget front is because my consultant is here to talk, to speak on it.
I get it, I get it. And we have a lot of people here for the zoning and their time's important, and I don't think it'll take a long time. So our next item is we're going to talk about the zoning text, the map amendments to implement the 2024 general plan land use element update, and Dusty Dooley is going to do the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, and maybe I'll skip the whole PowerPoint and all of that if it's okay with the mayor, we've given that presentation at the last two meetings. So yes, before you tonight, you have consideration to adopt an ordinance that will create the two new mixed-use zoning districts, which includes revisions to off-street parking standards. This allows franchise businesses without the benefit of a use permit and otherwise creates standards to go along with those districts. And then we also have the comprehensive update to the zoning map consistent with the previously adopted general plan land use designation map. At the last meeting, it was before council for adoption, and council made the decision to continue it to tonight to allow additional time for public input. Some of the letters that had gone out to property owners arrived shortly before or after the introductory meeting, two meetings ago, a month ago. Since that last meeting, I've had conversations with two additional property owners, one who was not confirming they were not affected by the zoning map change, and then one property owner who was affected by the change, and after a somewhat brief conversation, appreciated the city's effort and said thank you and supports the change to their property. Other than that, there's really nothing else to report since our last meeting. I do want to note, as I mentioned at the last meeting, there was the one property owner, and I apologize, I don't have the parcels in front of me, that wanted to revert back to the change to the residential estates instead of the R1 zoning designation. And that was reported out at the last meeting. And other than that, there's nothing else.
Okay, and I know we opted, Gloria and Tamara are here tonight, and we made sure that their zoning, they were excluded from this, right?
That's correct, and I did send an email to Gloria that did provide clarification on that fact, and she might be letting me know tonight that I may have left something else out. Okay.
All right, there you go. So let's open up a public comment on the zoning that I believe we're all in support of. We haven't taken an official vote, but I, we haven't heard any negative comments on it, but we're opening up a public comment, so if you want to speak, by all means. Who's first?
He did, we're talking.
So let's, Barrett, camera, go by all means.
Yeah, I wanted to comment on the proposal about what you call formula businesses, any business that has 10 or more locations that either prohibited or have to go through special hoops.
Right.
I'm curious to know, what about the banks in our town? We have three banks, Chase must have hundreds, the Tri-Valley has about 70, Savings Bank has nine, so if they open one more branch, they'll be under, they'll be hit in 10. And also things like the Farmers Insurance Building across from, from the post office, they're a national firm, are we going to exclude them? Or a block further south, the REMEX Insurance Company, both I assume are local, all my local people, and so are they also going to be excluded or forced to go through some future city council to quiz them?
Fair.
Or if possibly you consider excluding them because they're already here, what if they, the bank gets sold again, which has four times now? Anyway, I'm curious how that fits into your proposal to not allow these kinds of businesses in town.
Barrett, you always have good comments, and I appreciate it. We're not looking to AD6 anybody from downtown. It's, I think that it's more in lines of new business coming to town. If, let me pick one, let's say Wendy's wanted to go to the estate of Rich Padula's property. I think that they would have a tough time doing that. But as far as businesses that are already downtown, there's nobody who's going to serve them the eviction notice on that one. Is that fair? Thank you for that, that's a good comment, I actually hadn't even thought of it, thank you very much. Who else wants to comment on the rezoning? By all means.
I'm Trinity Clark, part of the tattoo studio trying to open on Main Street. Is this formula-based business part of this code right now?
You're good.
I just, that affects...
No, if you are a franchise tattoo place...
Yeah.
Which you're not, then we'd say, you're number 11, you can't come down here.
Yes.
But no, you're independent, you're all by yourself, we're looking forward to it.
We are being affected by the parking one, which is, as far as I understand, connected to the second part of this.
Yeah, by all means.
Is that something that I should be speaking on now or in a...
We're addressing that, and we think that problem's going to go away because we're making an amendment to make sure that you don't have that parking enforcement.
Okay, I just want to ensure that that's going to go through as quickly as possible. Thank you so much.
Did I correct you with that?
Yeah, you did good, mayor.
All right, so Dusty, this is the second reading?
This is second reading, and you have the opportunity to certify the environmental determination.
Okay.
And then approve both ordinances for the mixed use, creation of the mixed use zoning district, as well as adoption of the new zoning map. Should council approve it tonight, it would take effect 30 days from today.
Okay, so we, any public comment on this? You've heard everything now, we're going to most likely have a motion and a second vote on the new zoning changes. Last chance for public comment.
I'm just going to speak from here, if that's okay. As far as I understand, also with, with this, if you're not, like, if you are restricted by a code, you're then allowed to apply for variance?
Absolutely, you are.
So then, I believe that any of these formula-based businesses that are restricted would be able to apply for variance, which is, I think, easier for them to do than local businesses who are not being affected by the restrictions.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Match, yes, welcome, good to see you.
I just want to speak in favor of this because I think it shows an incredible amount of work has gone into resolving various property owners' conflicts and problems and resolving them. I think that Dusty and his staff have done an amazing job, and this is a huge step forward. Both of these mixed-use formula, mixed-use zoning categories are really in the city's best interests, and I'm thrilled.
We agree. Anybody else? Public comment? One, two, and public comment is closed, all right, is there?
Can I make an announcement?
Absolutely.
I just want to let you guys know that this speaker, that the microphone over here is not to, it's for the TV. So when you do get cut public comment, I would like to ask that you do go over to the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you, okay, to the council.
You know, I would like to move staff recommendations on 9D, and I'm glad that Gloria was contacted, so, with that being said, and glad that it's helping the local businesses.
Is that a motion in?
That's a motion.
There's a motion, is there?
Do we need a motion for each of the three banks? Or do we, we just do one motion for all three?
Yeah, I believe that's the case, but I wanted to ask our city attorney if it was appropriate to take motions on each of the actions in front of them tonight. I know you do need to certify the environmental document first before taking action on the other two items. I think I know that.
So for lack of confusion, let's do all three, okay?
It wouldn't make a difference, but we can't do both.
Okay, let's do all three, let's start.
Okay, so in that case, would you like to amend that you're suggesting the first one?
I'm suggesting the first one.
Okay, we have a motion for the first one.
I'd like to second the motion that we adopt a resolution certifying compliance with California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Mr. Clerk?
Councilmember Burton?
I'm going to abstain because I found out after last meeting that some of the parcels that are identified in that belong to me, and I think I'd best just stay out.
Okay.
Yes.
Gonzalez, Stransky.
Yes.
Almanese.
Yes.
Almen.
Aye, all right, what about the second one?
And I will so move the, I think of the...
Wave the second reading?
Yeah, wave the second reading, yeah, I was trying to find the right language, wave the second reading and adopt the ordinance and move the resolution.
Okay.
Second motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, to the clerk.
Councilmember Burton?
I'm staying.
Gonzalez, Stransky.
Yes.
Almanese.
Yes.
Almen.
Aye, to the third one?
And to the third one, and that would be the...
Amending the City of Willet's zoning...
Thank you, amending the, thank you.
This is the biggest one, this is the one that's affecting Reno.
Yeah.
Which many people are here for. He's not. This is affecting you, man.
And I'd like to so move the, amending the city zoning map.
I have a second motion.
Councilmember Burton?
I'm staying.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almanese?
Yes.
Almen.
Yes, and congratulations. We're going to have Saki being made in Willet's soon. All right, so, we will not take offense here, offense with this, if you came here for the rezoning, it's done, it's passed, and if you want to leave, we will not be offended.
Thank you, City Council.
Thank you. All right, now we're going to go to the budget. E as in Edward. What's that?
I'm Laura Stokke, finance director of the City of Willet's. I'm here to introduce Andy Heath, who's a consultant that's been working with us on this budget for the last month or so, to try and work out all the numbers and everything like that and get it settled in. So we're going to set up a PowerPoint, and he's going to do a presentation for us.
I did.
Get it set up.
Okay. Turn the computer on. Okay.
Show the presentation.
Sure. Yes. She wants to see the presentation. 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 He wants to see the presentation. Yes. 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 He wants to see the presentation.
And just gratification, sir.
Yes.
It's a forecast, it's not a multi-year budget, it's just a multi-year forecast.
It's just a multi-year forecast that is meant to be provided to your city as a help in, help for decision-making in the future.
Thank you.
Yep. We work with staff to prepare base budget requests, so you just a base budget, what it takes to operate the city on a day-to-day basis. All of that is built into all of the funds that are presented as part of the budget. And then we prepare budget materials for presentation to city councils, which is what you're seeing tonight. Next slide. Looking at the city's citywide budget, so this is essentially the budget all rolled up into fund types. So these aren't all of the funds. The first three lines that you see there, the general fund, the information technology fund, and the major K fund represent individual funds that make up the most discretionary funds available to the city for which the city may spend money on. You can pretty much spend whatever, you can buy whatever you want with general fund money, is what I'm trying to say. As opposed to some of the other fund groups, like enterprise funds, water and sewer, or special revenue funds, which are specifically designated for a certain purpose. You can't just use these funds for any purpose. They have to be used for, in the case of enterprise funds, what the rates are actually going towards, water or sewer, or in the case of special revenue funds, like gas tax or transportation tax, for things that are promulgated by the legal authority that grants how those funds might be used. Okay? So very important to understand that. Just because you might see a lot of money in enterprise funds or other funds that aren't
But they will get, they will get.
I know, but I'm, I'm just saying that this is a cash balance at the end of the year, assuming that, that's, that's our actual total cash that we have left to do business with. If, if we have money fronted to these two capital projects, that, this number gets lower.
If, if, if the capital projects have been paid for already.
Right.
And absorbed as expenditures into prior budgets that are all part of these numbers. Okay. To the extent you receive any reimbursements other than what we anticipate, that's built into the current budget or the million three that I just mentioned, that is going to add to your cash balances that you see here.
So to the extent that these are budgeted projects, the money's already been, the expense has already been calculated.
For the 1.8 million, the expense was already calculated and the reimbursement came in at the end of the year. And that amount, the 1.3 million will offset that 1.8, increasing the, the total fund, the ending fund balance later on throughout the year.
Right. So the 1.8 is already there. The 1.8 in expenditure is already there. The 1.3 is not. So the reimbursement needs, so that 9.7 million, starting cash balance in beginning balance at the end, in the first column at the bottom, that's actually $11 million. Okay. Because of the 1.3 that needs to be added to the capital improvement fund group as a reimbursement that was not part of this budget. But that's all we know about at this point. I don't know about any other. And that will, that will obviously parlay its way through this. So that's 6.4. 6.5 at the end of this, assuming everything is spent in all of the funds citywide that's appropriated there. And all the revenue comes in, that 6.5 will be 7.8.
Yeah, I'm just making the point that we have, we, we have a general fund that's spending $2 million more than it's bringing in. But we also have $13 million of capital projects happening in this budget cycle that, that require cash before they get cash back. So in terms of your 9.7, you're, you're getting in a dangerous, dangerous position to be able to pay those bills.
Correct.
Waiting for the reimbursement to come.
Yep. Okay, next slide. Okay, so this is just a pie chart of what the citywide costs look like, net of those transfers. So when you have transfers, you got to back them out on both sides, otherwise you're double counting. So you can see salaries and benefits citywide make up $8.6 million, about 45% of all the costs in the city. The next biggest thing is probably the capital, just under $5 million in capital, citywide. Most of that capital is in the city's enterprise funds for water and sewer. And then your operating costs are 24% or 4.6 million. And you have a little bit of debt service, about just over $1 million. That is in the city's water and sewer fund that make out, make, make up the rest of the costs. Next slide. This is the staffing overview from a citywide perspective. So you can see at the, for '24-'25, which is last fiscal year, the city had 64 positions, 64 FTE. FTE stands for full-time equivalence. These numbers do not include a part-time person that is actually an office assistant in finance, but that position is filled, but it's part-time. But all these other positions are full, are full-time. You can see here that at the end of the day, we have 63 positions. Instead of 64, there's one fewer position, and that is for the removal of a vacant engineer, associate engineer position that was funded in '24-'25. There's a big change in the way these positions are funded. So you can see the general fund is now paying for just over a position and a half more. And keep in mind that people are paid, one person might have five different cost centers associated with their salary. So they're partitioned by percentage. So this is just a combination of all the, the aggregation of all those percentages. General fund goes up 1.6 positions. Transportation, our MRA, goes down 1.2 positions. As the transportation tax fund, almost three positions. So you only have just over one position allocated in '25-'26. Parks Improvement Fund, left 1.22 less positions. So nothing is allocated there in terms of staff. And then your Airport Enterprise Funds, 0.63 positions lower than in '24-'25. What is getting the majority of all those decreases is the elimination of the associate engineer, obviously. And then you have an aggregate of three positions being added to the city's enterprises for water and sewer. 0.21 for sewer, 2.79 for water, and 1.66 positions for the general fund. Next slide. And that's the way all, the whole budget is costed out. And more importantly, the forecast is costed out in the future. General fund overview, '24-'25, this is just an estimate of where we believe the general fund will end up. 6.4 million in revenues, 6.3 million in expenditures, surplus of just over $121,000 in the general fund. A big caveat with that surplus though, because to achieve that surplus, the general fund needed a transfer in from the Measure K Fund of $1.6 million. So if you take that Measure K money out of the general fund for '24-'25, there was actually about a $1.5 million deficit in the, in the core general fund. And one thing I wanted to mention here is, again, we are in the process of closing out everything. '24-'23-'24, just on an accrual basis, some of the things, but all of that has been built in to the numbers that you're seeing. And then '24-'25, some things are going to change a little bit, but not to a lot, to a great degree. For '25-'26, you can see you have a $6.9 million revenue budget, a $7 million expenditure budget. So pretty much close to a balanced budget, expecting to use about $73,000 in reserves. But again, to only use $73,000 in reserves requires $2 million more from Measure K. So the problem in '25-'26, parlaying onto the problem that existed in '24-'25 in the core general fund is that you have about a $2.1 million deficit issue in the core general fund. These forecasted amounts, again, are prepared conservatively, including the budget. All positions are assumed filled, blah, 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 blah. So to the extent, for example, those positions stay vacant for the entire year, that's going to save $600,000 to $700,000 in the general fund, which will accrue to the bottom line. But again, the council has defined the existing level of staff as the appropriate level to provide a level of service. Next slide. Okay, '25-'26 proposed budget, general fund revenues. You can see the majority of your revenues accrue from taxes. And these are pretty much ongoing taxes that are received in the general fund, about 50% of the budget. These are things like property taxes, sales taxes, transient occupancy or hotel taxes, real estate transfer taxes, those sorts of things. So those are ongoing. Those are always paid. And they do, they do come into the city to support the general fund. That's about $3.2 million there. The next biggest thing is that transfer in that's coming in for Measure K, $2 million. And then you can see the balance of the budget revenue side in the general fund is rounded out by an array of things like charges for services, development fees, those sorts of things, governmental revenues that come in from, from other governments, fines and forfeitures, miscellaneous expenses, revenues, et cetera.
So is this, is this number, is it license permits?
Yeah, that's.
And franchise fees?
No, licenses and permits is the green section, and then franchise fees is the orange section. It just didn't, the arrow didn't get in there.
Okay, thank you.
Because I didn't bring the box.
So what is license and permits?
Licenses and permits would be like business licenses.
No, 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 I'm sorry, the amount.
Oh. So licenses, I got it right here.
It's that much, and it's orange too. No, it's, it's green, it's green.
It is $221,000.
Thank you.
Okay, next slide. Some of the key takeaways from the general fund revenues. So need to review the property tax growth amounts. They might be slightly higher. So I did do that today. And it looks like we're going to be able to add maybe $15,000, $20,000 to the property tax forecast that's in the current budget, just based on, on what I'm seeing. But again, we will not know until the actual role is released and ultimately paid to the city with the first teeter payment, what that secured property tax truly will be. Sales tax is, is pretty solid. There was a meeting yesterday, I believe, with the city's sales tax and sold community services that basically solidified the budget that we have and the, and the forecast that we have moving forward. One-time grant funding of $233,000 is built into the budget. So this is one of those things that's actually a one-time activity. So these are grant revenues that go to offset certain costs that are built into the budget that only happen on a one-time basis. So these are the types of things that are removed from the forecast in the future because it's not construed that they will be ongoing. Includes significant amount of miscellaneous revenues. And one thing I'm going to recommend to the city is that whenever you have a large amount of miscellaneous revenues, like $50,000 or more built into the budget, that you classify those more discreetly and appropriately for, for better transparency on what they are.
What would those be? What would be an example of miscellaneous revenue?
Like insurance. So you have, you have a large insurance reimbursement in your miscellaneous.
Yeah, there is. There's $455,000.
But because it's codified as, as miscellaneous, you don't know that it's an insurance reimbursement.
Well, I see a lot of them.
Okay, so I want to create a line item for that and get, just be a little more discreet on what some of these miscellaneous revenues are. And then again, Measure K does provide $2 million in funding to the core general fund.
You mentioned real estate transfer taxes. Does the city of Willets get any money from real, in a, in a real estate transfer tax? I wasn't aware they did.
There's a small amount that comes in.
What would it, what percent of the taxes?
From the real estate transfer tax?
Yeah.
It's small. It's, I want to say it's between $16,000 and $25,000 a year. Yeah.
Because I know St. Helena, St. Helena made a, actually last year tried to.
Yeah, and that's all dependent.
Reclassify themselves as a.
Yeah, that's all dependent on the transfer of homes in the city. So to, you know, if you've got a large amount of properties that are changing hands and things, and, you know, that obviously is going to.
Yeah, I mean, if you're a contract loss city versus a charter city, a charter city is, allows you to have, to get a bigger bite of the real estate transfer tax.
Yeah.
FYI.
So general fund expenditures, some of the key takeaways there. Again, all positions are assumed filled for the entirety of the year. And there's currently about $748,000 in the general fund worth of cost that are vacant right now. Dispatch costs include four FTE, so four full-time equivalent dispatchers and one dispatch supervisor. So there's five positions dedicated specifically to dispatch. Two of those positions, as they're currently filled by existing employees, are part-time. Okay, so their acting is part-time. Even though those positions are designated as full-time, you now, you have a salary savings, artificial salary savings accruing there as well for those two positions. Having said that, however, because dispatch requires constant coverage and minimum coverage requirements, a lot of that savings is offset by increased overtime or increased standby pay, those sorts of things that needs to be accrued to offset that, that vacant portion of the position. It includes cost allocations to other funds for administrative-related expenditures incurred in the general fund. So I'll go through, I have a slide specifically on that, but 39% of those costs are transferred out to other funds, appropriately so. It includes an allocation of the CalPERS unfunded liability amortization cost that's attributable to the general fund, which is just under 3/4 of $1 million for fiscal '25-'26. And then salaries and benefits make up the majority of the general fund-based budget. And you'll see that on the next slide. So you can see here, this is where all of the money in the general fund goes. So salaries and benefits, $5.5 million, 80%. And this is, this is high for a city for the size of Willets. Operating and other expenses, $1.4 million, only 20% of the total amount of the budget is going towards operating expenses that aren't staff-related.
What about insurance?
Sorry?
What about property and liability insurance?
That's part of other operating expenses. And that's a good, that's a really good question because, as you know, property and liability insurance are typically very high bills. So a good portion of that $1.4 million goes to cover insurance costs, which means even less costs are for core, really core operating expenses, materials, supplies, those sorts of things that it takes to operate your general fund.
Yeah, I mean, I believe our, that insurance is in the $800,000 to $900,000 range.
Yeah. And that, and that's, and that's paid for by multiple funds, appropriately so. But the general fund portion is built into those operating and other expenses.
Sorry, Danny, what's the typical break, breakdown or separation percentage?
Salaries and benefits for the city the size of Willets should be 60 to 65% of the entire budget, of the entire general fund budget, I'm sorry. One thing I wanted to point out here too is that if you took out the Measure K contribution to the revenues that are built in for the fiscal '25-'26 general fund budget, your revenues without Measure K in the general fund would be $4.9 million, 4.932 million. And you can see here that if you had all of your positions that currently exist filled and all of those positions were charged out in accordance with what we showed you on the chargeout slide for those positions, that would cost the city $5.5 million. So your staff is costing more than what you're bringing in, in all of your revenue sources in the core general fund. So.
Well, we understand that, but that's not fair. That's the truth, but that's not what's actually happening.
That's not exactly happening because you have vacancies.
Exactly, yes.
Yep, so those vacancies take away from that $5.5 million.
It would be dangerously balanced. The income would, you know, you got 4.9 versus 5.5.
Sure.
We talked about $700,000 in savings of, in the vacancies. So now it's just, instead of being 120%, it's 100%.
So, so, so a fair observation would be that if, if you build in that vacancy savings that currently exists or that at least existed at the time the budget was put together, I'm not sure if those positions have been filled. I don't think they have. But that $5.5 million would become $700,000 less than that. So it would be 4.8 million. So your revenue would barely cover it, but it would cover it.
Okay, got it.
It also, it also, it also doesn't account for overtime.
Correct.
Or does it? Does it account for overtime?
It accounts for the budgeted overtime.
For budgeted overtime?
Budgeted overtime, yes. Yes. So whatever is in the budget for the overtime, and there's a line item for every division. Okay, next slide. So this is where all your expenditures are in the general fund. And you can see that between the city administration, which has the city council, management, finance, HR, legal, and the elections departments, all built in, between city administration and police dispatch, that accounts for about 3/4 of all the expenditures in the general fund. Then you have your other budgets that, board departments that are there. So that you fund. Next slide. This is your cost allocation for the general fund. So what this process does is it actually looks at those administrative-related departments, recognizing that those administrative-related departments provide services across the array of all city funds, citywide, especially those with staff. So this process actually takes the balance of those budgets as direct costs and partitions them out based on staffing allocation costs to some of the other funds. So out of that $1.6 million in those, in that direct cost budget for those administrative-related functions, 39.1% of that amount is transferred to other funds in the city, appropriately so. So one thing I did not include in the city administration that's been included previously is workers' compensation. Or it, it does include workers' compensation because that is allocated based on staff. So it's appropriate to include it there. But I did not include liability or property insurance, which are separately calculated based on a different formula, not just based on staff, but based on assets in the fund because sewer and water have a lot of assets that, and the budgets are higher, et cetera. So there's a whole nother best practices methodology that's put, put in place to do that. And that's what we did this year. Yes, Ron?
So, and a quick question. And you say appropriately so, I just want to be, so you're saying that is 39% of the salary out, of being, the allocation being salary, is that typical, when you say that?
Yes.
That's a book.
Yes.
I'm going back to this insurance question because I'm looking at the police, the police budget, and it doesn't, it seems to have minimal to zero insurance.
Your insurance costs are likely in your non-departmental budget? So Department 1,000 likely, yeah. So if you go to, let me find the page here. Nope, they're not there. They're in administration. Okay, yeah, it's in administration, in Department 1,200 on page 21. Second line item under operating and other expenses, 61,200, that is the general fund share of your general liability, $197,390.
So is that, that, that represents maybe 1/4 of the premium? Does, is that?
It, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the.
Is that typical for?
Yeah, the way it was allocated is very typical. Yeah, yeah, that's what we, we changed that process. Yeah, yeah.
Because it seems like that's a, there's some liabilities in that department seem to exceed the.
Yeah, liability and property insurance are, they're increasing every year.
No, no, I know they're crazy, but, but it seems like law enforcement has a high exposure to those.
There's a lot of ways you can look at it. I just use the way that we use.
But it's a gap, kind of a, a count.
Okay, so let's go on to next slide, which is the Measure K. So this is the Measure K Fund, pretty, pretty simple fund here. Revenues of about $1.2 million a year. And the only thing that's in that expenditure for '24-'25 is to transfer out to the general fund to help offset, well, to, to help because it needed the money. And then in '25-'26, that 2.1 million is for, 2 million for the general fund and 110,000 for capital. So you can see that Measure K is using more than it brings in every year. And that's because prior to fiscal '24-'25, there really hadn't been any major use of Measure K and it had built up a fund balance. So assuming in '25-'26, we move the 2 million and spend 110,000 in the capital projects that are budgeted, you'll still have just under $3.3 million remaining in Measure K at the end of '25-'26. Okay, next slide. Okay, now we're getting into the forecast. So this is the, this is the core thing for the, for the general fund. So the way the forecast is set up, '25-'26 budgeted staffing levels are assumed for every year in the forecast. Okay, so we know staff is, is, has a lot of expenses in it now, but that is assumed ongoing throughout all years in the forecast. All positions are also assumed filled for the entirety of the year, for every year. There's no vacancy savings that's built in. CalPERS costs have been updated consistent with the actuarial forecasts that have been received. So those are real numbers. Cost allocations to other funds are prepared consistently with '25-'26. So again, the same methodology used to allocate costs in '25-'26 are used in, is used in all of the years in the forecast. And then for the future, to show exactly what the impact of the general fund is going to be, I have not included any Measure K transfers with the understanding, keeping in mind that '25-'26, 2 million is built in to be transferred. And for '24-'25, the fiscal year just finished, there was about $1.6 million transferred. In the future, that's not, that's not forecasted, okay, because I want to show you what the impact is. So next slide. So this is the impact. So this is basically kind of, kind of what's, what's going on. So in '23-'24, you can see the city used about $1.8 million in fund balance or in reserves that were set aside to balance the budget. There was no, there was no Measure K transfer done that year. In fiscal '24-'25, we're estimating that the city's going to have that slight surplus, that $121,000 surplus that we talked about. However, that includes a transfer from Measure K of 1.6 million. So the core general fund deficit for '25-'24-'25 would have been about 1.5 million, okay? Following on the heels of a $1.8 million use of reserves the previous year in '23-'24. In the current year, for fiscal, for fiscal '25-'26, the budget year that we're considering tonight, we have essentially a balanced budget, slight use of reserves of 73,000, but that again is requiring $2 million from Measure K. So if you back that out, that means you have a $2 million deficit, 2.1 million deficit. And then you can see, once we strip out all of the one-time things and the Measure K and just focus on the base case, what it takes to provide the services that are built into the current budget as costed out versus the revenues that come in on a recurring basis, the ongoing revenues, the city's general fund has a $2.4 million annual issue, which is just not sustainable. So something needs to be done to the city's general fund to help make it sustainable so that you don't run out of reserve, basically. Next slide. Because this is what will happen to reserves, assuming you don't do anything. And just so everybody's aware, the forecast is meant to be a tool. It's meant to be a tool for the city council and for staff to help with decision-making on what might need to be done to prevent these things from, from happening. So if we're forecasting these things to happen under a given set of assumptions, we know what those are. All we need to do is act, and act quickly, to actually mitigate the exposure to building negative reserves like this and essentially running out of money in the city's general fund. So doing nothing, next year, '26-'27, is when the general fund would go negative. But down there at the bottom, I also put the Measure K fund balance because Measure K would grow by 1.2 million, 1.3 million every year, assuming it continues to come in. So you really wouldn't, if you used all of your Measure K money to offset all the expenditures in the general fund every year, you'd, you'd get out to about fiscal '27-'28-'29, somewhere right around there, where the true balance between Measure K and the general fund combined would be less than zero. It would be negative. Okay? So the big, the big takeaway from the forecast is we have some work to do. And so I've got some slides on that, and we'll show you what may be on top. Okay, real quickly, the city's enterprise fund. So in the sewer fund, this kind of just shows you similar to the way the general fund was presented, what's going on for '24-'25 and '25-'26. One thing I wanted to point out is the '25-'26 proposed budget of $11.1 million in the sewer fund includes a $3.7 million transfer for capital. Again, this is one of those transfers that ultimately offsets each other because the sewer fund is actually two funds, where you have an operating fund and you have a capital fund. To move money from one fund to another, you actually need an appropriation, okay? Even though you're not increasing expenditures, you need that appropriation, which is why that $3.7 million debt that's receiving money, or not debt, capital that's receiving money from the operating fund is double counted, okay? So your $11.1 million expenditure budget is really about $7.4 million, okay?
So that's on the, on, that's on the revenue side also?
It's correct, that's right. Yep, yep. So you're, you're actually using sewer money. And that's, that's, which is very typical for enterprise funds, where you save up, you know, ratepayer money into a bucket that is specifically for capital. Rate, things like water and sewer have an ongoing need for capital projects. There's always a need to, to do things. Sewers need lift station repairs, water. Water, you have infrastructure improvements that need to happen. You have permit compliance requirements that are typically promulgated by the state. Wet Water Resource Control Board that come down and say, "You have to do this to make the water cleaner." And sometimes you've got to issue debt for that. But typically, part of the rate that's approved as part of the 218 study includes a capital component that is anticipated over that five-year period for which the 218 is approved. So hopefully, that's all been worked in, and these numbers include all that. But this year, this particular year, there's about $3.7, $3.8 million in capital for the sewer fund. And you can see what that is. It's for the... I can't even read that. A solar PV system, a Langham and gate replacement, and a UV control panel upgrade. At the end of the day, assuming all of this is done, and comes... All the projects are done, the revenue comes in like it's budgeted, you'll still have about $2.5 million in working capital or cash or fund balance in your general fund... Or in your sewer fund. Next slide.
So does that meet the bond requirement?
We're working on that. Yep, that should... We just started talking about that yesterday. So we're going to put the numbers together and work on that. I want to look at your continuing disclosure reports, which are typically required, that say what your debt service coverage is, and just make sure that all the methodologies are consistent, and then we'll know that in short order. Okay, for the city's water fund, the other main enterprise fund, again, four point... Just over $4 million in expenditures for fiscal '25-'26. Some notes there. Budgeted rate base may not cover operational expenses for treatment, distribution, and maintenance and debt service. So this is that coverage issue that I want to look at. Staff costs are $1.49 million, which represents 43% of all of the operating costs that are non-capital related. That's a little bit high. Capital budget in the water fund is about $547,000 for SWPT... SWTP filter media replacement, centennial spillway gates, and then a Franklin Avenue drainage project. The water fund reserves, at the end of the day, assuming all of this is done, will be just over $2 million.
Andy, I think it's also important to point out that minus capital projects, the revenue don't... Doesn't cover the expense. Say 3.5 versus 3.3, right? Revenue's 3.3.
Right.
And expense without capital improvement projects is 3.5. So there's a $200,000 difference, give or take.
Right. And that is because typically you save money in reserves to pay for capital when you need it.
Right, just the base. Without capital, you're not going to save any money.
Oh, right.
Current, with the way it's set up right now.
Yes.
With staff allocation.
So there's an operating deficit.
An operating expenses against the... So there's a potential issue with the current rate for the...
And that is primarily... That's why I put that staff percentage amount in there, because there's a lot of staff going into that fund. For your airport fund?
I'm sorry. So we recently did a small water increase several months ago. And does this reflect that?
As far as I know, yes. Yes. Yes.
We also added 2 million employees to the water.
Right. Right.
And we also lowered the increase by 2%.
Lowered the increase?
Yeah, because we were set for a certain rate and lowered that rate.
Okay, got it. Thank you. That's right.
Okay, for the airport fund, the revenues include some one-time funding for some prior expenses that were incurred in the airport, so that did come in. $151,000 there, so that's why that revenue number is $294,000. A big reason why it's $294,000. Staff costs pretty low in the airport, $16,950, represent about 17% of all the expenditures that are non-capital. You do have a capital budget in the airport of $22,642. One note on the airport fund, though, is that fund is running and has been running for a while in a deficit position. So right now, that... It's got a negative $430,000 balance at the end of '26, assuming $294,000 in revenue comes in and $120,000 in expenditures go out. So we'll make some headway in reducing the existing deficit, which is about $600,000 down with that receipt of that $151,000. That helps offset some of that prior deficit, but you have a deficit nonetheless in the airport fund.
What page is the airport budget?
Airport in the budget?
In the budget. What page is it?
In the enterprise fund section on page...
Page 60. 50, that's our 59.
59.
Yeah, so it's on page 59. Okay. All right, next slide. So these are some other fund groups. So these are the special revenue transportation funds, and I just roll these up together, present them discreetly in the upper box, but roll them up together for presentation purposes. So in the city's special revenue funds that are specifically for transportation, there's two funds. You have your transportation tax fund, and then your RMRA gas tax. RMRA stands for Road Maintenance and Rehabilitation Act, otherwise known as the SB1 money that can only be used for certain street projects, as can gas tax only be used for street maintenance and street-related expenditures. Both of these funds can only be used for transportation purposes. They really can't be used for anything else. There needs to be some nexus to transportation. And for gas tax and RMRA, there needs to be some nexus to not just transportation, but streets. So these are very restricted. So if you have money, a lot of money in these funds, you can't just push these to the general fund without a nexus to a street-related expense. The budget for both of these funds is about $669,000. There's about $350,000 in capital that is built into that. That's a transfer to the citywide CIP, Capital Improvement Program, that supports transportation-related capital. Total salaries and benefits for these funds, $144,000. The RMRA gas tax money is used mostly for the city's streetlights. And then at the end of the day, assuming all of this is done, both of those funds combined will have just over $100,000, $111,000 left over for future street-related expenditures.
Pardon me, would you mind going back to the airport again and just taking your summary page and collating with the budget page?
It's two funds combined. So are you looking at the airport?
I'm looking at the airport. I'm looking at page 59 and 60.
Yeah, that one right there. So the $294,000 is...
Under the proposed '25-'26.
Why do I have to remember there? That's right.
I mean, it looks like it has proposed revenues in 294, and on the budget page, it seems to say 238.
I'll get back to you on that, because I think I know what that is. That changed at the last minute. I think it has to do with additional hangar rentals and things that were actually added to it. I think the 294 is the correct number, and what's presented in the budget schedule needs to include that. It was like $80,000 that you put in there. Yeah.
Additional revenue?
So this...
No, just an adjustment of some of these line items.
Yeah.
So it's an adjustment of line items, and there's an additional $15,000 that is for those.
Well, the working capital on...
It's going to be only on the revenue side. Yeah, so yeah, working capital over there. What you see... What you see on the slide is what it should be.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that was the last-minute change.
Okay.
And it came in. Didn't make the presentation. Okay, let's go to capital improvement funds.
Hold on, can I ask? I'm talking about the airport also. Okay, so at the end, just to confirm, just two minutes, but on your slide, it says the bond project reserve working capital has a 630... 26 is negative 430.
Right.
30,000, okay. But in the packet, the budget packet here, on page 13, it has a different in the capital.
That's because of that... $88,000, yep.
Double check before you go on to that.
Because that... Once I have that back, then these... This schedule, particularly for the airport, will reconcile to the slide.
Makes sense.
Yeah, it's already... It's just in a different file, so... All right. Special revenue capital improvement funds. So these are... There are three funds built into this. You have your general plan development fund, your parks improvement fund, and your citywide capital improvement program fund. The largest of these funds is... Houses most of the central capital improvement programs, where other funds are transferring money into the CIP fund, and then ultimately paying for or funding capital projects as they are... As they take place. That is Fund 400, okay? That fund is the negative balance fund for that $1.5 million, all right? Well, we know $1.3 million of that just came in, so that's going to change this schedule and the budget accordingly, okay? So that should be only a couple hundred thousand dollars in a deficit, not $1.5 million. Parks improvement does have a deficit position, though, $276 starting. And assuming you do the $148,000 in expenditures that are there for the parks program, it'll end up the year with about $345,000 negative fund balance. Not really much going on in the general plan development. That fund should probably be closed out. But the capital improvement program fund, that main capital improvement fund, will have pretty much... It does have a balanced budget, 507 coming in, 507 going out. And then accounting for that $1.3 million coming in for the Rails-to-Trails project, that's not part of these schedules and not part of the budget, you're... At the end of the day, you'll have just a $200,000 negative balance there, not $1.5 million.
Yeah, I need to back up again to the transportation tax, 245. In the proposed budget, it has a estimated income of $1,050,000, though last year it...
For which one?
It had an estimated 66...
I'm having a really difficult time hearing your question.
Page 66, against your 245 transportation tax of having revenues of 1.25.
Right.
The estimated revenue for '24-'25 was 665, 642. The proposed budget is for $1,050,000, and your page has it at 1.1 and 1/4.
So this is... You're talking about the slide?
Well, I'm talking about your slide versus the...
1.25.
Our proposed budget on page 60.
So...
I'm trying to track what you're talking about with the pages in the budget.
Okay, so the 1.25 million in revenue specifically for Fund 245 that's on the slide is the 1.25 million in revenue that's in the schedule?
No, because on the transportation improvement... Oh, I see, it's got the other additions to it. Okay.
Okay.
I see it. But it seems like it's pretty optimistic. If last year it got 688, why are we thinking it's going to get 1.25?
Not everything's in last year on that one. We have to do some reconciliation on the RMRA and like that that's supposed to be coming in.
Well, you can understand why somebody would question it. Thank you.
So then I have a question on that, because most government fiscal years, which end on June 30th, the books are closed in October. And here, you just answered his question by stating, because not all the money's in, when are we going to close '24-'25 books?
We're going to close '24-'25 books. We're working on it right now, and we're also working on the '23-'24 budget. Sorry.
On it.
So as the two are going on, we're just kind of oscillating back and forth. We're cycling out through... We are currently at... We're currently at about, I would say, March now with our bank reconciliation. We kind of were jotting ahead a little bit. We put a lot of the big pieces in, but then now we're cruising through and like going back and doing our next sweep to add in all the small stuff to reconcile and actually pin it down to bank balances.
I understand, but the figure that Council of Bird just talked about is a big figure, a big difference between what's there and what hasn't come in.
Yeah.
I mean, if we had two or three more of those, we wouldn't have such a problem. Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to... Maybe it's just a typo or something. Isn't it about $80,000 a month that comes in for absent sales tax, give or take?
Yeah, give or take.
So it's not dependent on RMRA. It's a... Right, it's a tax that's paid. There are three tax payments that come in: the sales tax, the Measure K, .75, the transportation tax, .5. So I think it's underestimated, or it's underestimated in this number, and I think we can resolve it in short order tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we were on... Yeah, we'll move next to the other fund groups, so the police-related funds. Okay, so these are your special revenue funds. They have something to do with the city's police department, where you have narcotics forfeiture, which typically can only be used for specific police-related activities. H&amp;S restitution, vehicle abatement, LEAA, and I can't remember what LEAA stands for. And then you have DNA cost reimbursements.
Law Enforcement Administrators Association.
Some of these programs may be cost reimbursements through SB90, which is when the state mandates that you do certain things. If the state has money in its budget cycle to pay for these things that they're mandating, they will pay you what's called an SB90 reimbursement. I know for sure that the DNA cost reimbursement is one of those SB90 reimbursements. Typically, these costs are always borne by the general fund. They're not borne by a special fund, okay? So wherever you have a specific reimbursement that is an SB90 reimbursement, from my perspective, those money should be accruing to the general fund, not a special revenue fund, okay? Because they're reimbursing for prior general fund expenditures. So I do want to follow up with the police chief and with finance on exactly what makes up the Fund 226. Even though there's no activity budgeted, there's still $64,000 in there that may come over to the general fund.
Andy, I could follow up with you. I may have an idea for you.
I didn't hear you.
I can follow up with you. I may have a...
Okay, okay, great. Okay. But the other funds... Most of the other funds are for a specific police-related purpose. But for this year, there's no revenue that's budgeted that's coming in, and there's no expenditures due to it either at this time. Next slide. Then you have an array of specific other special revenue funds that, again, are for very specific purposes. You have some CDBG and home loan programs, PLHA housing program, which I believe is also for loans. Do you remember?
It's a housing rehab program.
Housing rehab program? Okay, so yeah. So it's a rehab program. East Hill mitigation fee, so any time there's a mitigation fee, it can only be used for very specific things consistent with the mitigation policies. Lateral repair loans, those sorts of things. So again, no appropriations out of any of these special funds, because these funds can only be used for a specific purpose. Typically, what I find in working with other cities is if things come up, then the city comes back and says, "Oh, we can use that fund for that purpose," because they find a nexus, and they'll come back to you with a budget adjustment, and you move along your merry way. So that's typically the way these funds are spent. And then the last fund slide is your successor agency fund, which is an agency fund of the city. It's my... To my knowledge, all of your debt for your former redevelopment agency has been paid off, no longer exists. What the... What this fund was receiving and ultimately paying out was funded from the state of California. It used to be former redevelopment tax increment that would accrue to the city's as tax increment to be used only for redevelopment purposes. That stopped in 2011, I believe, and you could only get what you needed to satisfy all existing obligations at the time. No new obligations, okay? So you couldn't do any more redevelopment. A lot of these obligations, the majority of these obligations, were debt service. So the redevelopment agency's already had debt in place, which required 10, 15, sometimes 25 years more to pay off. So the state was going to continue to give you that money, and so you could pay that off. off. But once it was paid off, it's done. So this $600,000 that's currently in this fund will likely need to be paid back to the, to the oversight board, through the oversight board, and then ultimately redistributed as property tax to the taxing entities associated with the city of Willis. Typically, the taxing entity for like the city, the city of Willis, I'm just going to give you not an exact number, but what I see is about 17% to 20% of what is left accrues to the city of Willis, consistent with its tax rate areas in the, in all, in the city. So I'm guessing you'll, you'll get, you know, if the 680 is truly what's left, and there's nothing else to spend, of that 680, you'll get about $135,000, okay? That will come into the general fund as tax increment, okay? Just for that. That being said, one thing that I did just realize is that if you are fully paid off, and you no longer require this money, okay? That means this money will stay in the former redevelopment tax increment and actually continue to accrue to the general fund as property tax for that 17% to 20%. So you should see an ongoing increase in your ROPS residual revenues of about $135,000.
You don't think we're already getting that?
Sorry?
That, that reallocation would have happened.
That, that happens two times a year. It paid every year.
You don't think that would have rebalanced long before now?
No, last year is when we finally paid off everything. So we received our ROPS A and not a ROPS B as of the end of last year. So we did see a little bump in it at the, at the end when we gathered distribution for the other part of the year, but we have not, we have not seen a more impact of it yet.
And I did, I did see that little bump as well today.
I would, I think for just for information purposes, it's interesting that the, the majority of that debt was used for a sewer line extension to the southeast annexation that allowed to build the hospital in the Hale Creek subdivision. That's what that redevelopment agency debt was.
Yeah. Okay. All right. So this brings us to the last slide. All right. So budget forecasts, well, and next steps. So some of the things we need to continue to do is what we've been talking about tonight is finalize the 2324 pre-audit actuals, and consider, knowing that the auditors have already come and gone, and they've taken away their fieldwork. If we recognize, and there are things that have been recognized, any potential audit adjustment impacts that need to be communicated to the auditors, we need to do that. So we will be doing that with the auditors. Having said that, anything we communicate to the auditors is stuff we already know, and it's stuff that has already been built into this budget, okay? So the numbers aren't going to change too much for those, for those changes. Prelimarily, close the fiscal 2425 general ledger in preparation for the audit. So there's still a lot of catch-up that needs to be done, and I've had conversations with staff today that that needs to be priority number 111. It has to get done, and it has to get done quickly, has to get done soon. You need to know exactly what these balances are as of 2425. So whatever resources are available to help get this done quickly, really need to be allocated to the finance department to get that done. That way you can finalize all the accruals and the adjustments, understand exactly where you sit in 2425, which makes your 2526 budget that we're putting in front of you just that much more accurate. And then based on the forecast that you saw earlier for the general fund, recognizing that there's about a $2.4 million structural issue, where you're using more in, it's costing you more than you're bringing in, basically. Strategize methodologies for balancing the general fund core budget and forecast, and increase those core general fund reserves. So right now, your general fund reserves are very low. You need to get, in addition to balancing your budget, you need to get your reserve back up, because you never know what might transpire that's going to require the use of general fund reserves. And things do come up, whether it's an economic incident, whether it's an insurance incident, whether it's, anything can come up.
We've been using them. We have been using them.
Okay, yeah, well, yeah, you have.
We know how to do it.
So some of those, some of those strategies might center around core cost reductions, looking at ways to reduce costs in your general fund, just overall. Looking at program and service efficiency opportunities that might exist, or reorganization opportunities, maybe doing more with less in certain cases, maybe looking at opportunities to contract out and/or use staff in different situations that may not only make things more efficient, but more cost-effective from an expenditure standpoint. Any revenue enhancements that might exist, whether it be looking at opportunities to bring in additional revenue through some program, or things that might be out there to increase that. And then, of course, continued use of major K. So right now, over the last couple of years, you've been relying on major K to keep your general fund balance at $300,000, which is almost zero, okay? You're probably going to have to do that for the foreseeable future, until significant structural changes are made to the expenditure side of the budget, and those conversations are had about how to do that. So I'm going to leave it at that. What we're asking for, what we're asking for tonight from the city council is to actually approve the budget as it, as it, as it exists, knowing that there are already maybe some savings opportunities that are built in structurally to the budget, where you have vacant positions, where you have those cost savings that may accrue to the budget to the extent you don't fill those positions. We know that there's a couple of small revenue items, but a lot of small items may add up to a big item if we come up with enough, enough, enough things. Approve the budget tonight. That way you have appropriation authority and spending authority moving forward. And the other thing that I, I just want to mention is that I really recommend that your city council, direct staff, to come back to you as frequently as possible, no less than every, every other month, with a fiscal update on exactly what's going on in the budget, what's been done to get things caught up, what still needs to be done, where balances lie, and call out specific attention to anything that has transpired in the two months that maybe we haven't talked about tonight or that came up. In the meantime, I believe that, you know, your city council needs to consider every option available to reduce expenditures in the future, and direct staff to work with you to do that as much as possible. So with that, I'll stop and turn it back over to the council.
Okay.
To me, Andy, I have a quick question. When we were talking about Springbrook almost every meeting for the first part of this year, one of the advantages that we were told is Springbrook, with the press of a few buttons, could tell us what percentage of the budget we've used so far this year.
Yes.
And that, just let you know, when he's speaking of staff coming to the council at least every other month, it certainly would be at least every month of telling us where the budget, what the percentage is of where we've spent money, you know? In theory, by December 30th, we'd be close to 50%, or maybe less, but certainly not any higher. So can we please make sure that a function on Springbrook is used?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, to the council, questions?
You know, I'll just put it out, sorry, I'll speak loud. We need to do something, but it sounds like what Mr. Heath's telling us is we need to pass the budget so that we have appropriation authority. I just feel like I'd be willing to pass this, but with the understanding that the city manager is going to come back to us with some cost reductions, some reorganization ideas that we could start implementing. We can't continue this way. I mean, in the past, you know, I was on the past council, we did, do we have money? Yeah, we have money, we're good, we're good. Apparently that wasn't the case. So from this point on, I think we need to, whatever's been working, wasn't been working. So I guess I would make, remember, not ready for motion yet, but my motion would include that we would pass this budget reluctantly, with the understanding that we would look at some cost reductions and that the city manager use whatever resources he sees fit to look at revenue enhancements, reorganization of the way the city's doing. We obviously added more employees than we had before, and we, maybe on the assumption we could afford it, but we can't. And maybe the way we're doing things isn't working, or there's a better way of doing it, and so, and also within the, within the spirit of measure K, what we promised the voters, you know, I want to stay true to that, understanding that if it wasn't for measure K right now, we would be in a lot more trouble, is what Mr. Heath has told us. But that wasn't the intent. It was supposed to be gravy, not, not the main meal, so to speak, so. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I concur somewhat with Jerry. I, I mean, I, I do see that if the, if the council here has the, the, I mean, I think it was interesting to learn here that we can go ahead and use measure K money to balance the budget, and we won't go broke until 26, I mean, we will actually use it up and be out of money in two years, three years, something like that.
If we don't change, if we don't change the structural.
Spend structural, you know, and, you know, I, personally, I, I mean, I probably won't be around to be, well, hopefully I'll be around. But, you know, I, as an elected official, I think it is, you spend a certain amount of public trust when you are taking a revenue enhancement of tax measure to the voters. You're saying to them, you know, trust us, we've done, done the best job we can, and we've come up short, and we need some help. The city needs some extra help. I think, given the way that the city finances are, have been run here in the last few years, and given that this is a 10-year, a 10-year tax deal, you know, putting wages in that, in that, against that fund is, is, is difficult unless you plan to go back, and I just don't think you will generate the public trust that you need to get an extension of that in 2930 or whatever, because you just won't have had it. I mean, you, you spent it, and you won't be able to, to get an enhancement. So I don't look at this as being, solving this problem with revenue enhancement. I think that the, the community has given this, the city enough money to do its job, and our job is to figure out how to spend that money most wisely and get the job done. So, you know, I'm, I guess my real problem here is, is that we've been, we've been talking about this since I got on here in February, that we've known that we've had a $2 million structural deficit or close to it. We have gone back and handed this budget back to staff and asked them to find savings, and they bring the budget back, and it's even a little bit more than it was when we gave to it. I mean, there's been no, there has been no movement in, in referring this back to staff and say, bring us, you know, save us a million dollars, or, I mean, maybe we haven't been direct enough, but we have asked repeatedly, I mean, we have stalled approving this budget, and we've asked repeatedly for changes to be made. We have now consumed a quarter of the year, so, I mean, 25% of the savings is gone. Anything you could have saved, starting at the beginning of the year, you've spent it for the ensuing three months. So, you know, I don't like the continuing resolution to authorize the spending of money, but I also don't like approving a 2 million, 2.5 million dollar deficit budget, saying we're going to fix the problem, you know, by having bi-monthly meetings. The decisions are going to get no easier, and I, I think that, you know, they didn't even go, they did not even take out the, the empty positions and show a $700,000. I mean, it's a guest.
That would be up to us, though. We would have to do that.
No, I mean, we've asked them, we've asked staff to address this budget deficit repeatedly since I've been here, and it has not come back with any, any, it's been ignored. So I, I'm just, you know, I don't know what we're, what you can expect to be different by giving the same direction again.
Well, I think there's several things that we have taken into consideration. With all due respect to past councils, we did not, until this year, we didn't have a 2223 audit. And as the interim city manager would tell us, what we've learned since we have got that audit, and we've got the following audit, is since 2223, 2324, this city has been working in a $2 million deficit every year, and we've been paying out of the reserves without the council even having the knowledge that you were, look at you, Matt, having a $2 million deficit, because I would imagine you would have done something about it if someone had said, "Councilwoman, there's a $2 million deficit." And so now we have these numbers. I mean, I don't think it's fair to say staff hasn't done anything, because we've been screaming for the numbers, and we're getting the numbers, because there's very little we can do until we have the numbers, and now we have. And I'm going to quote you, Andy, "We're 95% sure these numbers are correct," okay? Because not all the stuff has come in. But, and it's also very important for the citizens to know that since 2020, the city has added nine more staff members to the budget. So since the passage of major K, nine more staff members have been included, have been put on payroll. Well, that, honestly, if you, if you couple that with the pay raises that have been given to employees, I'm not saying they're bad, I'm just, it's facts are facts, that's put us in that $2 million a year deficit. And so, yeah, things are going to have to change. We all could talk about, we could all raise our hands and have ideas of what we're going to do, and honestly, so I want to take it to the citizens, you eat elephant one bite at a time, and tonight we're going to most likely pass a budget, okay? And this budget is going to be talked about at every city council meeting until the, every city council meeting as long as I'm on this council, because just hard decisions have to be made. If anybody out there wants to run for city council, the elections are next year, let me tell you.
But Tom.
And let me just finish.
All right.
There are some very hard decisions that are going to be made, and we are not going to sit here and say, well, let's wait until the new budget before we make decisions. I'm saying to the city, and to the staff, to everybody, we have hard decisions that we're going to make. We are going to make these decisions, and we're counting on staff recommendations along with tough decisions to make the budget better. I'm sorry, Bruce, go ahead.
No, 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 you're floor. I, I'm just, once you pass the budget, the, the staff is authorized to spend that money without any further input from the city council. And they can spend that money, and you will only know it when you get the, however you get the reports and how timely they are. But you are authorizing them, you are authorizing, in my understanding, in every other budget that I've passed, you're authorizing them to spend $7 million and change against $5 million and change in income.
And we have a great deal of respect in the administration right now of the city, and I thoroughly believe that a decision's not going to be made that would be contrary to what our intent is of cutting costs.
Tom, can I share some thoughts?
Sure.
You know, first of all, I just want to say thank you for everybody who's taken this out. I mean, you're obviously very particular about the city. And I'll speak up, those in the back. Okay. And, it's getting later. You know, months ago, when we were talking about having financial issues, we were not sure of. about having financial issues, we were not sure of how bad those issues were. We now have a much clearer and more accurate numbers than we've ever had before. That's a significant amount of information. Additionally, you know, when we had the idea of, like, let's pass a budget, we knew that our general fund was going to be negative. So we knew that we couldn't pass that budget, because you can't have a general fund that's negative. We're at a point today, and we were presented with a budget today, where that's not the case. And so, again, I would just push back against that idea that the staff hasn't done anything. They have done what we've been asking them to do, which is to continue to cut. And we went through several budget iterations and versions of it, and each time, we were getting closer and closer and closer. This is the first budget that I've seen that's represented, that we're actually in the black. And that's in the black with accurate numbers. And I think that accounts for something. I think that means something. It does not mean that we're solving the problem, but it also reflects the fact that we did not get into this issue for one year. It doesn't happen in one year. It didn't happen in one person's decision. It wasn't one person's fault. There were many people involved. So if we're going to get ourselves out of this situation, it takes time. It's not going to get it done in one year. And I, for one, wasn't expecting to take this budget process, the '25, '26 budget year, to fix every single issue that we've ever found, and the whole thing to get deeper and deeper, the more we look. What I hear, Mr. Heath, in the financial department, and our staff, including today, is a planned, multi-year, multi-phase effort to get back on track. And while it is true that there are many difficult decisions that have to be made, a lot of those decisions require time and information, and I think that those are going to have to be done over the next course of months and years. I don't see a lot of those decisions being made in the next six weeks. There's a lot of impact that has to be discussed and shared, a lot of permeations of possibilities, and it won't be as, it's a difficult process. So I just think I have a little bit more patience with the process itself, and this is really the first time, again, that I've heard a multi-phased, multi-year effort to get back on track. And that begins with the auditing. That begins with getting the general ledger, you know, up to date and getting the year '24, '25 finished. But it also begins with passing the budget today. And then we will continue to do the work. I'm very concerned, because I know I don't want to be known as a person who kicks a serious problem, kicks that can down the curve here, and I don't feel like we are doing that. I feel at this point, we're in a unique situation where we finally know what it is. We finally see what's happening. We finally see a way out. We finally have numbers that turn us into the black. And now this is just the first step of many that we're going to be held accountable for. And I think that's ultimately where I kind of wanted to end with this idea that I want to be held accountable for those decisions. And I think that the public is right to hold all of us accountable for this decision. So, you know, when Mr. Gonzalez, and I know my fellow council members say, like, "This is just the beginning. We're going to do more steps." Keep us accountable. We need to be held accountable to do those next steps, which, you know, I think Mr. Heath had mentioned, you know, in passing, that, yeah, bi-monthly reports is, would be a good idea. But honestly, that's minimum. I mean, that's just like throwing the most obvious thing out there. Of course it should be. There's a lot more things that should be changed and dealt with, but I don't want to hold up this budget under the idea of, you know, making the perfect the enemy of the good, right? This is what we have right now. This is the facts that we have in front of us, and I would like to see a budget passed, not because it could solve our problems. And certainly, it's not a win. It's not even something we can be proud of. It's just something that is, and then we can move on to the things that need to really get done, because there are structural issues.
Is that a motion?
No, not a, no, no motion. But I would like to see one being made. Before we make a motion, I feel like we should hear from the public.
Yeah, we're going to go open it.
Absolutely. But at this point, since we're just discussing what our thoughts and opinions were, I just wanted to share that with the population. So, thank you very much for that.
We'll sit. Go ahead.
Larry, anything? Anything to say?
No.
Bruce, anything more?
I'm out this time.
Okay, we'll open up the public comment.
I'd like to just add on, because I, this has been a long process. I've been here for five months now, and I, it's been, it's been frustrating, frustrating at times and revealing at times, and new things have come to light in the last few weeks. So, the work, the work to reduce the cost against the general fund continues tomorrow. So I agree with all council members. I agree with Councilmember Burton on the, what appears to be a lack of action. My only, my only... I don't want to say it's not a rebuttal response, is that what has been the enormity of the issue against the, against the amount of budget available and the amount that has to be cut has, has revealed or shown that it's not a single action, and it's not one thing that's going to make this change. And it is a, it's a complex, it's a complex set of issues that are going to require, it's just going to require a lot of discussion and a plan with some, with some numbers that, that mean something in the reduction. So I think in, in the spirit of the purpose of the, the intent of Measure K, I would not have considered reducing the number of police officers or sergeants or something that would directly affect the police department as a good, as a good cost savings measure. But I agree that monthly reporting on, on general fund and the budget and how it's going is, is important moving forward. Ideally, that's against the budget that, that's when you're considering the review of spending that's consistent with the budget that was within the means of the city. So I think one of the, one of the, one of the primary challenges here is figuring out how to meet the needs of the city with the amount of money that's available. And this has real impacts on real people in the community, and, and that's why we need to give more time and thought to what that solution is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, to the public comment. Matt and then Barrett. Thank you for that. Thank you.
I'm Matt Strong, and I think Mayor Almond just, you know, cornered me about, if I had known that the city was basically driving down a railroad track that was going to go over the cliff, I would have been very alarmed, and I would have wanted to take action much sooner. And I think Councilwoman Gonzalez has mentioned that we were not getting told the true financial picture, and we were, in fact, being told that things looked okay. So I have regrets that we were not able to plan ahead and start the process sooner. And I'm also regretting that, you know, it's taken three months beyond when the budget should have been adopted to have good numbers, or we hope good numbers. And this has been a very frustrating process. I think it's easy to say cost reductions and service efficiency with reorganization. It has to get specific. And so in addition to getting caught up with the audits and knowing where we stand month to month, I really would like to have us look back to the 2020, '21, when we started adding personnel, and, and of course, year to year, we also gave raises and kind of had to do that to stay, you know, to keep our staff functioning, really. So, but I think inherent in trying to make reductions would be to go back and have a snapshot of not one-time costs, but the base ongoing core services, how much we've been spending in the different departments year to year, starting in the 2021 fiscal year. If it can be done with a quick, I mean, I know there's a lot of work to be done, but I don't think you're going to get very far until we can figure out where we started to grow beyond our revenue. We need to live within our revenue. I don't think we're going to get a magic new revenue sources. I think we're going to have to, and I think this decision isn't really up to the current staff. I mean, they're doing the best they can to provide the services, and I think they're all doing good work. I don't think it's fair to ask the department heads to say, "Who on your staff would you like us to cut?" I don't think that's a fair ask. I think the city council has to decide, where are we spending money that we simply can't afford? Where are we going to tighten our belts? And I think a look back for the last several fiscal years might help you do that. And if you do that, then I would like to see apples to apples. So keep all of the personnel costs similar from year to year, you know, that sort of thing, just, just to get a fairly accurate picture.
Thank you.
Just to provide your response. Matt, I would, I would just, I would look at the biennial budget, and I don't recall exactly which page, but where the general fund revenue, the sheet that shows, shows the increase in the general fund revenue, I would go look at that, and the projected increase in that projected increase includes Measure K, and the expenses follow, follow that increase, including Measure K. So it's a couple pages there, and we can look at it together. So...
I think it would be fair to say that we could use Measure K funds, 1.2 roughly million a year until they run out. But we've already drawn down, you know, double that in the last two budgets.
You're right.
And so we can't just, like, empty the Measure K fund. No, that's not fair at all. It's not giving the people what they, what they passed when they gave us Measure K extra funds. So it's fair to say that that is revenue that's going to come in until 2030, but the budget should balance without that.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else who would like to, Barrett, by all means, and then Sherry?
Yeah, I wanted to ask you a couple of very specific questions.
I'm not saying that we'll be able to answer your specific questions, but we'll get to the answers.
The capital improvement fund has a negative balance of 1.8 million, which apparently, if I understand, is because we have paid out money in advance for money that's going to come back. In fact, we just got 1.3 million. So when we paid out that money, what fund did it come out of since the capital improvement fund was broke? Did it, if it came out of the general fund, shouldn't that go back to the general fund, that 1.3 million, rather than sitting down in the capital improvement fund? Wouldn't that improve our general fund tremendously?
Right. It's technically, that's technically a general fund.
Yeah.
A general fund CIP. I mean, I'll defer to that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's transferred, well, see, the, the way that the CIP fund works is it, it'll operate as a deficit, and it actually kind of borrows from the pooled cash. And so when it gets put back in, it is recognized as grant revenue going into Fund 400, that then shores it up afterwards. And that then offsets it, and it goes back into the pooled cash as it was before. Now, other people have theories on, like, that's general fund, or that's Measure K, and you're borrowing from this, you're borrowing from that. And that is all true. Things are being borrowed from at that point, and it only hits the pool, the level of pooled cash at that moment until you start to look at, okay, year-end stuff, what do we do in order to be able to transfer funds from, and what funds do we transfer from? But we hadn't gotten that, to that point yet, because revenue came in from, from rail foot trails in order to be able to cover that cost by the end of the year.
So does it, does it accrue the general fund remarkably instantly?
No, because, see, it went, it landed back in the general, into the CIP account, which then shores it back up. Now, it still has some negative deficit there that then can, a theory, like you said, can be used to say, like, oh, that's coming from general fund or that. But it's really, at the moment, borrowing from the pooled cash system.
But dollar for dollar, when it comes out to go to rail foot trails, how the general fund work out, it comes back to general fund. It just takes a while to do that. And that's one of the issues we've had is the cash flow. Our burn rate is much higher than our income rate.
But in the new proposed budget for current, it doesn't include that 1.2 million, does it, that we just got?
We, no, we didn't, that paperwork was repaired before the 1.3 came in.
So that makes the city look a lot healthier, right?
Well, we were still $500,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then another, second question. One of the line items on expense was city administration, and behind it, there was a number one, and it was $800,000. Does that mean we're paying one person?
No.
Eight hundred.
I thought it was one of us, but the answer is no on that.
And then finance is $360,000. How many people does this cover?
I don't know which page we're talking about.
The very beginning.
It's not just, it's not just people. It's other expenses associated with finance, other expenses associated with administration. So on that slide, 39.1% of that is, 39.1% of that total, correct if I'm wrong, is salaries and benefits. So it's not all just people. And that's the, technically, what's being covered by enterprise.
So for the, for the cost allocation, you take all of the things that make up the administrative-type budgets, which would be the city manager's office, finance, HR, legal, elections, those sorts of things. You add all that up. It's recognized that all of those things cover the city as a whole, okay? So in all of the operations for all those things, by virtue of being city hall, all of the operating costs associated with all of those things are also covering the city as a whole. So the way those are allocated, certain costs are allocated is based on the percentage of the salaries for every fund in the city to the whole. So 39%, 39.1% of all the salaries accrue to other funds. Therefore, 39.1% of all of those administrative costs are then transferred, consistent with the salary percentages in all the funds, and there's like seven or eight funds, enterprise, transportation, those sorts of things, gets allocated out. So that's the way that's done.
And the last question, yeah, the one through me off, there's a foot though, not a person. And in the 64 positions, I didn't see police. Did that work with the police?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Barrett, I really appreciate that you're attending. We have a city council. Barrett, here's a copy of the slideshow. If you have any specific questions, you're welcome to ask us later, okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, Sherry, you're up.
Do you have any more comments?
I don't, because I was only given one, but maybe somebody, some other nice soul will give you one theirs. Not to say I'm a nice soul, but I'm not.
It's right here.
There you go. Okay. My address keeper.
My name is Sherry Abiam. Thank you so much for that presentation. Really appreciate it. I wrote a bunch of notes here. When I think of proposing a budget, one of the things, you know, when the numbers are, are put into the, into the system and you see what it looks like, part of the work is to propose, well, to start with, what are my ongoing costs? What are my one, what are my one-time costs? Identifying those. And I heard a lot tonight about one-time costs, and I think those numbers are, are essential to identify, take them out. This budget, I can't imagine, I guess, presenting a budget for '25, '26 without including '26, '07, and '27, '08. To me, it's always, I like to look at a big picture. And I know, I heard tonight about how important it is to pass the budget, and, and, and then I heard the comment, "Well, it gives the staff the right to spend that money." That doesn't seem, if that's the case, pass the budget, but it seems it's so essential to prepare a three-year budget, looking at ongoing one-time costs, preparing a list, that, that one number that I wrote down, 80% of this budget in the general fund is salaries, and then it's one of the... And then one of the council members asked, I think Ron, I think you did, asked, is that typical for a community this size? And we were told, well, usually it's 60 to 65%. That's a huge difference. And that would seem to me, so as part of a budget proposal, it doesn't mean it's going to happen, but you can put that in a budget proposal, reduce this position, this one, this one, this one. This is what it looks like if that happens. At least you, there's the bigger picture. So I, I think, anyway. There was another comment I heard about the discrepancy in the transportation tax fund between the estimated revenue for last year compared to the 1.25 million for this year. And I heard the comment, well, that money hasn't come in yet. But to me, I think the budget has to reflect what you expect. It's not whether it's come in. It has to give the information to us that tells us, this is what we expect at this point, whether it's come in or not. According to our information and our numbers, this is what we expect, and use those numbers for a more accurate picture.
Ms. Ebyam, your three minutes is up.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Can I take this?
You can have that, Sherry, it's yours.
Anybody that would like a copy of it, just let me know, and I will email or get a copy to you.
Who else would like to speak, please? Nikki, by all means.
Hello, my name is Nikki Caldwell. I got a couple questions. With the 80%, the Assistant City Manager position, she's on, she retired, is that already taken out of that?
It hasn't been yet, but it's not foreseeable to be filled.
Right. The third one was gone, as Catherine Maricello said, that we didn't have the position before, and not sure if it's going to be refilled, but I'm assuming that was a huge part of that. And then also, under the previous city manager, we had a lot of contractor and outsourced jobs. I don't know if those are part of it, but I know that was a really, really high price. And then, what's that? Oh, and then the other thing is, and, I mean, we all know that operation cost is going to keep going up, all the chemicals are getting more expensive. So I would maybe suggest thinking backwards and see if we do want to raise the rates again to offset all of our costs, that it's going to be costing four chlorine, chemicals, whatever we all need. And then the other thing is, which I want to disagree with Madge, that nobody was aware because, and please, Manny, if you can, tell me if I'm wrong, but I'm pretty sure, and I will do my homework and try to get the city council meeting online, but I'm pretty sure that in May of 2024, Manny did say something about that we are having issues, and I believe it was said prior to that, at least once as well, and I'm pretty sure after he said that, shortly after that, he got put on administrative leave. So I'm going to do my homework, and I'm going to look at the May '24 council meetings and a couple prior to that, but I'm pretty sure there were things said about that our budget doesn't look the way it is. So saying that nobody knew about that, I don't know how accurate it is.
Thank you. Who else would like public comment? Open it up. One, twice. Public comments opposed to the council.
Like I said before, reluctantly, I will move to pass this budget as long as our city manager comes back with the proposed cuts and doesn't.
Wait, 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 wait.
Well, not cuts, but.
We have a resolution to pass a budget.
Oh.
And you're adding, you're adding as long as?
Well, I think that was part of the presentation today that we were going to have, so. If I cut out.
I think, you know, Mr. Hube suggested that we actually make a different specific request to staff to hold the biennial.
All right, then I will move the budget, but then I would like a specific request of our city manager.
Right. I think just do that separate.
Yeah.
Okay, so your, your motion is to approve the resolution as presented?
Yes.
I second that motion.
Motion is.
Councilmember Burton?
No, it's not.
Councilmember Burton?
No. And, and the reason is, I just think that we need to take more of a positive approach. I just think this isn't addressing the problem to the degree that it's been presented, which I appreciate the presentation. So no.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we have a budget, and to the staff, as seriously as we took this tonight, and we have for the last three months, we're going to continue to do it at every city council meeting, because we have a structural issue.
Can we take a five-minute break?
We can take a five-minute break.
Thank you.
We will continue, when we come back, we are going to come, the airport.
30 is about all I can.
Okay.
Let's continue with the first item in department recommendations, and this item, A is in Adam, the airport changes, and President Member Keenan, the municipal, Willis Municipal Airport Operations, by all means, thank you, and thank you for hanging around.
Thank you, Andy.
What else do you have to do?
We're all in it together, right?
We're all in this together. Titanic or something.
Honorable mayor, council, colleagues and community members, Ken O'Shea for Oscar 28. Those of you who don't know what Oscar 28 means, that's our airport identifier. Every airport has one, it's abbreviated. So Willis Municipal Airport, we were directed by the FAA to make some changes to our municipal code, and at this point, I think we've all had several discussions regarding this matter. We've got tenant input and support, and we've, we've broken down to just the language that was directed by the FAA to include in our new municipal code ordinance modifications. So I think the next step for us is hopefully to make a motion to accept the first reading, and we'll put it on the calendar for the next council meeting, if that's possible.
I make that motion.
That motion would be to introduce, move the introduction of the ordinance to waive formal reading.
That's my motion, thank you. I have a second.
Okay, thank you very much. Public comment on the airport. Any public comment? One, twice? Public comments opposed to the council? We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion on this? Okay.
Councilmember Burton?
I?
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Stransky?
Yes.
Almane?
Yes.
Amen.
All right, all right, moving on, thanks for sticking around.
Thank you.
Wish the budget was that quick, okay.
I told you we could.
The rest of us, Senator. Okay, Walter, you're under pressure now, because he isn't, boy, we have adopted a resolution identifying the proposed project list for Senate Bill 1, Road Repair and Accountability Act of Fiscal Year 2025-26. Go ahead.
So every year, we work with Caltrans and SB1 funds, and we have to give out a proposed list of projects for the upcoming year. We are bringing forward one that we had from last year, it'll consolidate funds. They're going to be funding us for 133,982 for the next following year of SB1 funds. We've put together two projects as possible ones. One is from last year, that we would consolidate funds, the West Mendocino Phase 2 paving and gutters and sidewalks, and then a sidewalk and safety enhancement project. So what we're doing is looking for, we have to put together this list, send it to them, and they will approve the funds and stuff. Whether or not we use them this year, they'll be there available for us. This is the ninth year of the program that we've participated, and it's helped tremendously in being able to do some of the bigger projects, road projects. They provide quite a bit of funding for us, and it helps enhance the roads in the city. It's used strictly, like Andy said, these are funds that are used just for road projects.
Are these projects done by the city or have to be contracted out?
They get contracted out, yeah. They go to bid, they're in the process, they're usually bigger projects and everything, yeah.
So West Mendocino is one, what's the other one, Walter?
The, there's two of them there. There's the sidewalk, well, it's striping and crosswalk safety enhancements, that's a possible one. And we can, we'll be able to use it for either one of those projects. This is a list that we submit to Caltrans, and they will approve those. There's a chance that we will use it just strictly for West Mendocino, we might be able to use MCOG funds for the sidewalk and striping project, so. But we have to put forward to them a couple of, some projects that are viable, that they will approve, and they'll approve funding. Likelihood, just because of our budget situation, is they will not get done this year, they might be postponed till the following year, but we still lock in the funding from Caltrans.
Can you tell me the last three or four projects that have been done?
All our pavement preservation projects were done with SB1 funds that we've done. And the phase one of the, there was an underground project we did, used some SB1 funds, the '23, '24.
Is that on North Street?
Yes. Well, there was stuff on North Street, yeah. The last year, we did, let's see, there was the one on Locust and off of Walnut there, and several other streets we did and stuff, that was the '24, '25 PPP project. And then we did Lenore and Bosque Bell the year before that and everything, yes, last couple, those are the last two we did right now.
I'm just always a little sensitive that, that east side of town gets equal attention to the west side of town.
Yeah. There was a list done, and what it's based on, it, it, we have a pavement preservation.
I saw that, and please don't ever give me 200 pages of pavement stuff to read again, because I'm not going to read.
It's involved, there's a lot to it.
I understand that, but I do not need 200 pages.
That's the report and everything that we have, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Can I?
Sure.
Yeah. So this study, I saw the traffic speed surveys, was that same ones that the police use, or is this just something that was done as part of the safety study?
This was one done even before I got here, it was the safety one, and it encompasses a lot of things. It encompasses speed, encompassed safety concerns with striping, with sidewalks and everything.
So this was more for?
It was a generalized one, but a lot of the things that we're going to be using for the striping and sidewalk safety are incorporated out of that report, yes.
I mean, and again, when it comes to pavement preservation, I, I'd rather than have somebody call me up and want the street paved, I'd rather have a scientific approach to see.
Yeah. Everyone wants their streets paved, and it is one of the biggest expenses any city can have, and it's critical, because a lot of our roads, there's a PCI index where they rate the roads, it's on a scale of 1 to 100. We actually have roads that are in the single digit at ones and twos that are, you know, totally going to be replaced. We try to base it on. We try to base it on the traffic patterns, there's several metrics because we use and stuff. And so some people are going, well, how come mine hasn't been paved? Some of them are near schools, they have high traffic usage. On the West Mendocino, the reason this one's being brought forward is Phase 1 was all the underground work. We've taken an approach to do all the underground first, take care of all of that stuff, and in Phase 2 of the previous one, usually it's cheaper project to do in one scope of a project for underground and paving and sidewalks, it's split into two. So this would be Phase 2 of that project from two years ago.
All right, thank you.
Any public comment on this presentation?
I just got a quick question. You said that there was like?
Can you introduce yourself?
Oh, hi, I'm Nick Johnson. You said there was a, the SB1 had 133,000 that was coming in, right?
Correct.
And the proposed projects, do those stay under that number, or are you pulling out funds out of like the general fund and others?
No, it wouldn't come out of general fund, it'll usually come out of transportation funds. We get, we have funds for just roads and everything, no, it wouldn't come out of general fund. And they don't stay within that, that's just a portion of the project.
It's a portion of the project.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, cool, thank you.
Good question, thank you. Any other public comment? Public comments opposed to the council?
I would like to move the recommended action to adopt the revised accompanying resolution to approve the 2025 pavement preservation project in the amount of $133,982.
Motion is there a second?
I got it, I'll second it.
Second, okay. Any other discussion? Just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, just that, I really don't, Walter, you said you don't see this happening this year, and I don't see it happening this year. So I will support it if, if it is, we get our name in the record books on it, but.
Yeah, we'll lock in funds for the cycle and everything, which we should do, and it would be wrong not to lock those in, and then next year, there'll be more funds. Right now, just with our financial situation, all of our CIP projects like that are all the big ones like this, so we'll accumulate some funds and get a stronger financial position to go ahead with those projects down the road, yes.
Okay. Any other council questions? All right, to the clerk.
Councilmember Burton.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Yes.
Stransky.
Yes.
Alanese.
Yes.
Comment.
All right, all right, so now let's get to the entertainment zone, Dusty. I'm sorry. Connor, come on in, sorry.
Thank you. And I believe there is a hard point, if you could assist real fast, bring him that up. Thank you so much.
No, there's not going to be.
You sure? Yeah.
I'm really sure.
Is this a joke?
Keep it going, everybody.
Yeah. A joke, not a joke. As well. So today, just speaking on the entertainment zone ordinance discussion, so I've put together a really sort of loose ordinance based off of the direction that council gave about a month ago, based off some practice ordinances. Guys have sort of in that larger packets, the draft entertainment zone ordinance, again, which is mostly there as a reference point and guide over some different topics that I will go over here. The draft downtown entertainment zone boundary, the draft entertainment zone management plan, the Senate Bill 969 text, which is the entertainment zone California Senate Bill, which allows the entertainment zone to be considered in the first place, and then the ABC FAQ, based on entertainment zones, which is basically the most commonly asked questions about entertainment zones from the state of California that have been answered by ABC. So just to start off and sort of give a baseline here, the Senate Bill 969 authorized cities to create entertainment zones. Basically, not creating necessarily new events, but allowing businesses in those areas where events are occurring to take their business outside with specific boundaries such as certain cups, certain types of alcohol that is defined by the municipality that the entertainment zone is created in. So that's what that originated from. Next, today specifically, we're looking at some feedback and discussion on the entertainment zone map and initial areas. So today, we're giving sort of the framework, and there's a guideline for the framework. Different areas would be established through resolution by council, and in those areas, they'd both be defined by the initial map, as well as the types of alcohol permitted, as well as the times allowed. So whether that be certain time spans from AM to PM, or certain days of the week, such as if you want to turn Main Street into entertainment zone during events, you can look at two areas where there aren't necessarily buses going, like say, keep it on the weekends when school's not in session. That's an example. And then lastly, we'll go over the management plan for administrative requirements. Basically, once the zone is set through resolution, then there'll be a sort of set of guidelines from management plans, so that folks can apply for this administratively at a sort of set series of guidelines that is assisted, that has been assisted, been created by council through this. Here's a potential downtown entertainment zone, just going from Wood to Main Street and slightly down Commercial. For most, most common event landings sort of are in this area within Willets. And again, some direction that we're looking for here is to either make this space available in a entertainment zone by resolution for regular use or during certain events, looking to sort of see what council's looking for. As well as with note, all the properties surrounding this sort of entertainment zone would be notified for public input and be surveyed sort of on what's being looked, what's being looked for for a zone such as this, which is likely be proposed as one of the first.
Can I ask a quick question on this?
Of course.
So this little notch right here, it includes this intersection, does the inclusion of that intersection interfere with the traffic control or moving traffic?
So we'll look at that in a little bit. So far, with just the map, those are the areas that are allowed. The management plan that I mentioned earlier includes how whoever's doing the event or the routine thing plans to manage traffic control, closures, boundaries, markers.
So this blue area, just a blue area of possibility?
Just an area of possibility that is set by council, and then, so that's what would be by resolution, is setting a blue area.
Got it.
That there's some guidelines on. And then the administrative things, the management plan would be setting, okay, how exactly is this going to happen within the guidelines that council has set through resolution?
Thank you, clear.
So the, what about the area around Frontier Days that was looking for some consideration of that same?
I spoke to Karen on the phone, and what she was explaining to me was, is that, as I understood it, is Frontier Days has an annual event down in Rec Grove, and at least Karen was interested in maybe looking at the opportunity to take the fencing down, I guess this is maybe a requirement of ABC, is what I understood. Again, what the entertainment zone, as Connor was alluding to, is all it, essentially what it's allowing is not controlling special events, but it's, it's more so allowing for existing businesses that have alcohol licenses to be able to serve to patrons, and then that patron can then go walk out in the entertainment zone. So it wasn't clear to me that it was applicable to the situation in Rec Grove, where currently you can go, you can get permission from the city to use the space, you can get a license from ABC to serve alcohol, and if they require you to have a fence, then I guess you're required to have a fence. But where the entertainment zone would come into play is if you wanted to allow people to purchase alcohol from existing businesses in that area and then walk within the public right of way. Then, then this would establish a framework where we could establish an entertainment zone in that area of town.
Isn't that just one, one part of it, though, one element? It's not just to allow existing businesses, it's also to allow for special events to, to, to.
Like if you had a margarita truck.
Yeah, it's not, it's not limited to just existing businesses.
Well, right now, we have events in downtown, and it's been the Lions Club or other food trucks that had an alcohol license, they can currently serve alcohol and you can walk within the right of way. So that, that exists currently. So without us talking about creating an entertainment district, you can have food trucks as part of a special event, you can have a group obtain an ABC license and serve alcohol within the downtown area, and council can authorize them to walk around with those beverages. What this does is it now would allow for the existing restaurants, bars, to sell alcohol to a patron, and that patron can walk outside the business within the entertainment zone and enjoy that.
In an approved container.
Correct.
Not glass, not metal.
Correct.
Does, Connor, was this kind of a takeoff on, I know during the pandemic, they allowed restaurants to do, to go liquor, and then it seems like that got kind of collapsed after, afterwards, ABC kind of, kind of.
So that is where it started, but then it sort of got slowed down, but then came back for things like this, where a lot of businesses just have gone and do this back in 2024, where the most recent updates to this Senate bill.
So does that imply that this is like a certain time? What you're saying is it's like a, like Monday through, or Friday, Saturday, Sunday from, during certain hours?
Well, that's, what Connor is telling you is, is council, that's one of the decisions before you, and you tell us what you want to, how you want us to frame it. So it can be, it can be that this entertainment zone can only be activated as part of a city-approved special event, or, and this is probably more prominent in larger jurisdictions, and that's not necessarily what staff's recommending, but you could also say the entertainment zone could be activated every Friday from, you know, from, from noon to 10:00 PM. So that, that's again, one of the questions before council, yeah.
And even when you open up the entertainment zone, then you run into the management plan, which is these sort of set of rules and things that then I have here now on this slide, which is sort of these set of things that need to be set in terms of standards, that then are approved administratively once the zone is set, and a sort of set of guidelines and reasons. And within this, we have things like the alcohol sales service, so I'm nobody there, the age verification method, so stamping or wristbands, whatever method the city wants to use, as well as securing public safety. Now unfortunately, in terms of security and public safety, we haven't talked about that a ton with Willis PD, just because as we've been putting this together quite quickly, the chief of police has been out of town the last week or so, as we've stuck this together. But the plan is to sort of, let me jump back.
So, so let me jump in, though, real quick. By your logic, on, at special events downtown, that you can sell alcohol in a, in a parking lot, and people could freely move through the right of way, right? That kind of goes against what happened when we discussed this through the car show, one, and two, what that implies is that Frontier Days could sell alcohol in the, in the Rec Grove, and then they could just walk within the right of way with a special cup from, from the Rec Grove to the carnival or to the rodeo, right? Isn't that, isn't that kind of what you're saying by allowing this to happen downtown?
I think typically ABC, yeah, I guess it's, it's what you request, but it, yes, events have gotten permission to hold events, entities have gotten permission to hold events in Rec Grove and been able to obtain an ABC license with the police department's approval to serve alcohol within the park. That is correct.
Is it in the park? They wasn't allowed to go off of the street?
No, I don't believe ABC or the city authorized that in the past, not that I'm aware. And then, and then for the Main Street, then, yes, then you've had situations where the city's authorized the closure of Main Street, and then entities such as the Lions Club, or I think maybe in the past, Norseburg Brewery, but entities have been able to obtain ABC licenses, again, with city police department approval, with providing proper insurance is required, and then they've gotten permission to walk around within that alcohol zone, including the closed off street, including the sidewalks, with, with, with their cups, right? But what hasn't been able to happen in the past, which would be subject to approval of this entertainment zone, is you could go into a restaurant within that entertainment zone and purchase a beer, a glass of wine, and then walk around. You wouldn't have to, you know, rely on a third party to obtain an ABC license necessarily.
Who's going to pay for all this? I mean, who's going to pay for the people to patrol it? Are we going to have the police department as part of it? Are we going to have to hire security? Or how, what, what's the rules on this? And also, the other thing that, that bothers me is that I just, I, I just, it bothers me to walk, see people walking around the town with beer or whatever their, wine or whatever they have as a, as a, call it a family thing. It's not a family thing, it's only for whatever you want to do it, but somebody has to pay for it, and we can't have the police department do this two or three times a week.
So as a part of this, with the suggested management plans, so whenever somebody puts in a management plan to be approved administratively, Willets PD would need to approve it. So they would need to say, we either have the folks do this, or they don't have the folks and have the manpower to do it, and it'd be up to whoever's putting in for the management plan to provide it themselves.
Oh, so they would have to provide it?
The management plan would need to be approved with the Willets Police Department. So depending on what they're planning and sort of what their pitch is, it still need to be accepted. If they're saying, we're going to have no security, nothing going on, then that won't be approved by the Willets Police Department. But if it's provided for, and it's under a, under guidelines that are acceptable to ABC and acceptable to the Willets Police Department, then it's good to go.
Connor, how do, how do other cities do it? Like Fort Bragg, they have an entertainment zone. Do they have to hire security?
They approved an entertainment zone yesterday.
Okay, are they going to have to have security in the Fort Bragg Police Department there?
I don't know, not off the top of my head. I, I think that this management plan system is the same system that they're running under, in that they, whenever a new event comes up, they have whoever's running the event with the management plan, talk with the Fort Bragg Police Department to decide how much Fort Bragg can give versus how much needs to be provided by the event giver.
Simply creating the zone does not automatically allow every event to take place, it's still a case by case basis, and people's concern about public parking or safety, all of that would be taken on a case by case basis.
Which is why, a big chunk of, I think, today's conversation is looking through not just the plan, but looking through every step of this management plan to see what the city wants to be able to have as a standard.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
I just, I think it's a great idea, it's just, you can't ask the police department to do this, you know, every week. I mean, and they're going to say, you know, yeah, we'll do it, but who's going to pay the bill for the police department?
It requires nothing of the police department, other than looking over the plans, and then if they cannot provide the security required, then it would need to be whatever security or whatever markers or whatever personnel is required by the people.
Okay, so if the police department can't do it, then you're going to hire security?
Can I, Connor, real quick, so, so Councilmember Stransky, you're asking the right questions, and I think public safety is probably one of the biggest issues that we need to think about before authorizing it. What, what you have in front of you is a draft framework, and then, as each entity wants to have an event, they're going to work with, with Willets PD. If Willets PD says, we can't provide security for you, you're going to need to hire somebody. Each event will have to present its own security plan to the satisfaction of the Willets Police Department. Nothing that we're presenting requires the Willets PD to provide the security functions for that.
Okay, but, okay, that still brings up, if Willets Police Department can't provide it because they're too busy, or they've done too many of them, or whatever, if you hire security, then that particular group that wants to do this, or is going to do this, they're going to have to pay for it.
Correct.
Okay.
Agreed.
That's all I need to know.
Jerry.
It's my understanding, places like San Jose, those places, they're, it's a mixture of private. It's my understanding places like San Jose, those places there, it's a mixture of private security, depending on how big their event are, they're a bigger area and they'll use police. I mean, I, it's my understanding that here, given our size, and I'm assuming it'd be the same over in Fort Bragg, that if it's a deal where somebody says, hey, we want to do a pub crawl. And hypothetically, if we had five bars that wanted to participate and it was going to be this big giant thing and they approached the police department, they say, gee, we only have six officers right now total and we can't handle this. Sorry, it's not going to happen. Kind of like a couple of years ago when Frontier Days wanted to do the parade and we didn't have cops. And then the solution came that private traffic control did it. So it continued. So there's, there's end around, so in theory you could do it. So I, I kind of support it, but only as this management plan, as long as people don't have the expectation that, hey, the police department says, we just don't have the bodies. And there's not the expectation, oh gee, we're going to go ask the sheriff's department, somebody else to do our work for us. That, you know, I kind of want to put that out there because sometimes there's an expectation with folks that, well, in so and so place, they cast the sheriff's department. Well, if the chief or whoever here is looking at this and goes, I can't, you know, I can't staff this. I don't recommend it based on things that are happening right now. We don't approve it. People don't do the end run and try to say whatever. I think as long as it's that, that conversation is happening. So in theory, I, I support it because let's say it was, the event was a, a wine event for two hours in the downtown for some sort of deal that's happening. Or, you know, three hours and it's manageable and the police department says that's fine. But then two weeks later, somebody wants to do again, a biker beer run or something and it's going to have 500 people show up at the downtown. That may be too much in that expectation that happens. I get that you'll have your management plan in. So as long as that, that the police department gets the final say.
Two, two parts of that I think might be helpful is the first is one of, I've listed one of the missing parts that we don't have right now, which is why we're not bringing forward a first reading, which is the Willits Police Department, because we haven't had those thorough conversations. The other is public input. Whenever, whenever these zones are made, there needs to be a really clear conversation with whatever businesses, the businesses that are going to benefit from the entertainment zone in the first place on sort of what entertainment zone means, what events within it, participating in it, what they will need to do and what is required for those. What the expectation is in terms of security and what needs to be said. So I think that having those conversations as the zone is being created by resolution with all the businesses that are going to benefit from it, I think that'll hopefully help mitigate those misunderstandings.
Bruce?
You know, I was more in favor of this before you guys started talking. I'm kind of losing interest.
I'm not, I think it's fantastic. I'd like to you, for you to include North Borough Brewery and the new Socky Place, but on your.
I mean, I'm, I'm not sure why you draw boundaries and exclude any place from it other than residential neighborhoods, I guess. But it seems like it might be one of those things you just see how it flushes out with Fort Bragg for a year or two and try not to be the inventor of the wheel of the thing. I, I don't know, the idea of having to do a management plan. When I started out in forestry 50 years ago, I did a timber harvest plan and took two pages. Now harvest plans are about 500 pages. And it, and the management plan is, it's just an invitation for government creep. It just sounds like it's just.
Well, we're just talking about it at the beginning, but I appreciate you working on it because I've, I've been pushing this for quite a while. So, so just keep working on it and so give your input so they.
Do you have a specific side of questions that you need?
Yeah, so, well, let's see if I can go back with this. Yeah, page 47, it's over on page 47. So in terms of public safety and liability, so it's whatever in terms of both size and hours and also in terms of events versus routine time that we looked at, and I'm sort of looking for direction from council. So are there certain times within that would be ideal for it? Let's bring it back to the map here. Let's say for something, say throwing this out on downtown Main Street. What sort of times are we looking at, both in terms of AM to PM and days of the week in terms of limiters? And then based on that, do we want to do any regular things where a zone like this is open? Or we want it just open to be applied for us for specific larger events?
I would think that if you're, in the iteration you were talking about, the current businesses, you'd want to, obviously talk to the current businesses, you obviously would want to at least keep it, you know, I'll use L-Maxx for example, you go in there and at a certain time they close, but before they close that last hour, they don't even have their kitchen open. So you wouldn't want to be serving alcohol during that period. So you look at what, what the businesses give you and say, we're open till nine, but really we stopped serving whatever, our alcohol or food an hour before. Well, then why would we want that zone to go beyond when they have that capability? And you pull the businesses and they go, this is when we would be available. But if only one business is open to that period of time, then why keep it open beyond that? If it's to promote the current businesses. And then, and we, we start off with that, I mean, like, like Bruce says, we, we learn to walk before we run. And then that would be my idea.
How early do you think something like that would start then also like?
Well, the, the car show starts at eight o'clock in the morning and yes, then people would drink a beer at eight o'clock in the morning.
Yeah. Well, that's true. I was actually thinking, I would actually think about the car show because if you recall, we were interfering with their religious services that were going all the way through. You know, so I mean, I don't know why we would need to have open drinking before noon. I mean, that's, that's just my thought, I mean.
If you were. Connor.
My dad, it's day drinking.
I'm of the mindset that let's start this with like four, choose it four times a year. So we have the car show, we have the harvest festival, we have Fourth Frontier Days. We have something in the spring with Chambers.
So you said.
What's that?
Parade?
We're talking about the parade, yeah. But I mean, let's start with like four events and say, all right, during these four events, let's give it a shot. Because those are four events and we have the highway closed too. Those, and those are, that's a good way to start this. So let's see where the problems are, that's what I think.
Should I add, it looks like that's what Fort Bragg is proposing to do. Soft start, special, special, a few special events. And, and then I haven't reviewed the ordinance yet. I don't know if you guys have looked at the ordinance.
I just saw the news on NCT.
Yeah, but then some noon to nine, Friday through Sunday would be like a timeframe in a certain area down.
Friday through Sunday, you said?
And then, yeah, studies show that people that, people drink less when they take a glass of wine and walk around than they would if they sat in a bar. So that's one thing to.
Seriously?
I'm just going off.
They spill more.
I can't verify, I have a source for that.
And just to clarify, the Fort Bragg model of basically creating some zones, resolution backed up by sort of schedule, this is what an entertainment zone is, and then having management plans within that is the Fort Bragg model that we took off and are now looking for input from as well. So that's, that's what they're doing as well.
So who, so right now we're at the stage of just discussing this. So you're just bringing it to us to talk about it?
A hundred percent, everything is very loose trying to figure out and get additional input based on the, we had two before. Now we're down to one based off input. Now it's moving this back and forth, this is general ideas before going to public input.
Okay.
Yeah, I like the idea of four events.
Who's going to have, are you going to have a liability policy with the person that is going to make this? Or the group that's going to make this in case they do some damage?
So right now there, I believe there would be under the encroachment permit liability anyways?
Well, I, I think what we can do is we can require a deposit. That's what we do when we rent out other, you know, public facilities. We, we can toss around some different ideas, but yes, insurance becomes a requirement and there's an opportunity to collect a deposit. So if they don't clean up their trash and our folks have to do it, or for some other reason we have issue, maybe a deposit becomes a way to get assurances on, on that end of things too. We also have language in there that if we get somebody that we get permission to have an event for and they're a bad actor, we would have the ability not to issue them a zoning permit in the future. So there are some checks and balances there. Our city manager is correct. Fort Bragg is calling their program a pilot program. Connor is correct, we've modeled this off of Fort Bragg. We've got, done a couple variations just to make it a little bit more flexible if we want to make changes in the future. I heard very concrete direction that you want to look at us doing more of a pilot program with, with ours as well. Should we ultimately, should council approve it? And I hear, you know, four events a year, which is essentially what we use it for anyways, outside of starting some type of first Friday program.
Give it a shot, see what happens?
Sure.
I think it'd be interesting to do a little background on what, what insurance would cost the individual. I mean, you may, I just have an impression if you are go down to buy a liability policy to serve alcohol on Main Street from whatever, West, East Valley to Commercial that you can't hardly sell enough alcohol to cover your.
Well, find out what Fort Bragg's done, you know, they, they probably.
I just say, I think that as part of it, you got to find and figure out whether it's even economical, whether you're imposing an obligation on there that just makes it un-economical to even do it.
And the state law has been changed to make it legal. And so, you know, it's just like a skate park. If the liability in a skate park is pretty nil, as long as you keep everything up. And so I, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel here.
No, I hope we don't.
Just move forward, we're like this, this is good. Any public comment on entertainment zone? Nikki?
Hello, my name is Nikki Caldwell and I got a couple of questions. So the first one that I see, why are we now always including Commercial Street in that? Because I would rather see you guys flipping that line and go up to North Borough. The reason why I'm asking about Commercial is this is the road to the valley, the emergency road to the valley. It's a fire department's route. It's, I believe, the tow route that you guys use if something happens anywhere. So continuously blocking that, I'm not a fan of it. Like I said, if I, if we could flip over and include it to go up, maybe go down from Sherwood to wherever you ended on there, that is my only concern. I know we shut it down for like an hour during the parade, but I don't really think that, that there should be a huge amount of time where that part should be blocked. That's just me. Maybe allow it to the city park because that can be just, you know, within the city park. Then the other one is what is about security? I know that question already came up. Who will be responsible for that? And you already answered that, but I had it written down anyway. I personally, and that's just me, I'm personally not okay with having adults walk around with alcohol. Like, I, I, I don't know, I can't see that happening, going to L-Maxx, walk out and go across. And I don't know, that's, that's just me. So just wondering if we really want to do that. Who will manage the event and ensure that the rules are followed? So who will manage that the management plan actually is followed during the event? Like they say, is somebody going to be there to watch them or is it just going to be on a trust base?
Is it, I can answer both questions, is that all of them or is there more?
No, there's more.
Okay.
We're, we're going to move fast.
Okay, so, and then you can just write them down and come back to that whenever. You don't have to answer me right now. Who carries the insurance for the entertainment zones? So that is one of the other questions. How many security, like if it's a dead mount, you need that many security people? If it's a little bigger over the hole, you need like 10. So that's the other one. Who pays for that and does the security have to be bonded slash certified? Or can I call Tom and say, hey, Tom, do you want to be my security guard today? Or is it actually going to be a company, like an official security guard? That's the other one. And then I, I keep hearing Fort Bragg, what works for Fort Bragg might not work for us just because location and whatever, we're going to have to work that out. And then another thing is also with having it always on a north end. Are we planning at some point to include the south end of town? There's a lot of restaurants, there's a lot.
One step at a time.
Whatever, that's just, and that's all just for you down the road. And then one more thing, like we said, four events. One of them is the, the car show, which is done by the Chamber. So if the Chamber puts it on, will that event then run under the city insurance? And will the city insurance be used for all of that?
The application will fill that, I mean, he has the application.
That's the only thing I have.
All right, thank you. You have a speak, yep, you're up.
Hello, Caroline Rayburger, Perspective, new business owner of Flying Dog Pizza. So this is proposed right kind of where I am. And one of the things I want to speak to, so with the car show, Harvest Moon, I'm sure there's other ones. But with all of that, the way that our alcohol license works right now is that we need to keep it within our red lines. And so if you get a beer, sir, and you take it down the road, that would mean that our business has to pay that liability. So part of what's being proposed, to my understanding, is like releasing some of the liability from our business to make it into more of a public event. So that's one thing that I'm curious about, hearing more about, I suppose. And also when it comes to the four events, does that mean that hypothetically, if this gets passed, that Flying Dog Pizza would not be able to propose an independent event to work in this arts and entertainment?
I think that's what it means, sorry.
Okay.
I mean, you could work with those four events, but yeah.
But not propose another one on top of that?
I think the idea is we wanted to basically walk before we ran, so.
Okay.
Let's start with four.
Okay, all right.
Thank you very much. Who else would like to talk on this? By all means. Right, hold on, she's up first, you'll go next, go ahead. And thank you for everybody for staying awake so late.
My name's Jamie Vudelier and I want to help you understand the insurance. I did the insurance for the Christmas parade. I'm pretty sure I insured everyone in Northern California. Don't think that Santa or anybody was drinking, so I don't know how alcohol plays into that. But that costs around 400 bucks with the insurance that I had to cover the whole city, Caltrans, the Evergreen Center, everybody else, everyone on the side of the road. So that was roughly what it costs to do that, but that was no alcohol.
Is it planned for this year and if so, what's the date?
I don't have that information for them.
All right. Who else would like to talk?
Hi, I'm Nick Johnson again. I wrote some, just a couple things down on my, because I didn't have a pad and paper. But before I get into this, I just want to share a quick story about, I run an event space in New Kaya. And it was inspired by a trip I took to Albuquerque, New Mexico. I lived down there for six months. And Albuquerque is not known for its safe and warm inviting feeling. Actually quite the opposite. But once a month, they put together these first Friday events where they shut down the street and they'd allow open containers in the road and where they normally don't. And in an environment where there's a lot of crime and a lot of, you know, unrest, these events actually went surprisingly well. The, the streets were thriving, businesses were thriving, people, there was, it was nothing but smiles. So much so to where when I came back home, I ended up starting these first Friday events in New Kaya. As far as insurance goes, I love the idea of going a couple of events a year. Maybe not, maybe not a Friday, Saturday, Sunday zone where alcohol is permitted. But maybe we start with a couple of slow, like subtle ones. Maybe, maybe we do a pilot weekend and try to push an event. Maybe the Chamber of Commerce does something like, hey, we're trying this idea. Why don't we try it out? Because starting with something like a Frontier Days or the parade or the Harvest Moon would probably be a good one. But something where there's a lot of people might make it a, a bad taste in the mouth if something goes wrong. So dialing in kind of the details before you even get into a big, big event like that, but ultimately building up to where we can. Barriers, I hear a lot of talk about barriers and blockages. Of course, for the, for the parade or the hometown celebration. parade or the hometown celebration or the Harvest Moon Festival or any other ones, those are shut down, but what, what does it look like, you know, if it is on a Friday, Saturday, where you're allowed to have a beverage and go shopping and you don't have the barriers, rather you have like some kind of team that is securing the zone to an extent, but traffic is still allowed through, you're able to just grab a drink from Flying Dog, go walk across the street to Shawna Key Pub, grab a beer and then go hit Moon Lady and go shopping for a second, or whatever it may be. But I do think that the budget is having a hard time and I think this is an opportunity to encourage people to go out and spend some money in their local downtown businesses. Why not south? You asked, more focused on south, there are a lot of alcohol serving businesses on the north end in this, in zone right here, but I do agree that, you know, equal opportunity is important. I, right now, I think the focus on the downtown core is a good pilot program to start. And then again, as far as like insurance goes, happy you said that it was kind of more affordable than I thought initially, but getting sponsorships for these events, you know, the, we're able to, we're able to enjoy alcohol-free league things too, or, you know, the Chamber of Commerce or something stepping in for this or, or whatever it may be. I think that this is actually a huge opportunity because we've not been able to have open beverages in California, it's like a, not really a California thing, so like having this opportunity would be huge and I think it could bring not only tourism, but more business to downtown, thus ultimately increasing some tax revenue for the city.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anybody else? Public comment? A month's going twice, public comment is, Karen?
I can answer some questions really rapid fire on some of the stuff.
Rapid fire's good.
Rapid fire, yeah. So, part of the reason this map was done in the northern side of Willet specifically here is the areas that are shut down that have a lot of businesses that serve alcohol within them, where we could do events basically with the same sort of footprint as done previously and just have this that's already set. Down in Southern West, we haven't had events where the main road is shut down as much. And so that's sort of what it was originated around. Let me see here, I think that covers a few of them. In terms of security in all this, part of the management plan is every single time something needs to be secured, it's based on the, both, they need ABC to be a, okay with it, so as was talked about with things like Frontier Days that are already just events, it won't affect, shouldn't affect what they are already doing, what they're already requiring in terms of things like fencing and taking care of their events, it's just for other businesses to be able to also partake in this space. And in terms of security or hiring, that would be all based on the jurisdiction of what wants to be allowed by council in terms of timing and new spaces, as well as the chief police, the Willets Police Department, allowing these events to go on in the first place.
All right, looking forward to in October, first part of November, having some kind of ordinance we can talk about and go First Read, Jared?
Just, just a quick thing, as you look at a proposed ordinance, you might look at our current alcohol ordinance so that if that needs to be modified too in, in the process.
No, I think we're good. We'll take that feedback, especially the part of making a pilot program, eliminating it to no more than four events a year. Again, we're not limiting it to four events that you can happen, but you're only gonna be able to initiate the entertainment zone and allow businesses to serve alcohol out of their existing businesses up to four times a year.
Okay. To put other people at ease, just to let you know, with the exception of the town of Mendocino, any other place in the county, you can walk down the street with a bill open beer, it's not against the law.
I mean, now with Fort Bragg, Ukiah, I know.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah, okay.
Wait, what? Can you repeat that again?
I said, with the exception of the town of Mendocino and the four incorporated cities, Ukiah, Willets, Fort Bragg and Point Arena, if you're in an unincorporated area of Mendocino County, there's nothing that forbids you, if you're legally able to have a beer, from walking down the street with a beer.
So you don't walk down the street in Leightonville with a beer?
You can walk down the street in Leightonville with a beer.
You see, well, you can go lie in your, lie down the street.
Yes, it's, with the exception of town of Mendocino.
Well, well, Tom, you might wanna qualify that with certain, so like you have a, well, if you go to, if you go to a liquor store in, in Leightonville, they, because of ABC rules, that you can't consume that on their premises.
On none of their premises.
I love it, you're good.
I'm not a lawyer, I'm not giving out legal advice, I was just a sheriff. All right, so, okay, we're moving on. Department monthly reports. Any department monthly reports? Been a long meeting. We covered airport, community development, finance, police departments out here, services, facilities, anything, Walter?
Do you guys have any questions?
Okay, all right, so a couple announcements. This Friday, the California Conservation Corps opens up their new ceremony, their new center at 11:00 AM. So we have a very great economic boom in our city of probably 100 people are gonna be, at least in summertime, sleeping on a new facility on East Hill Road, it's kind of exciting. They'll be there at 11:00.
But you have to get a thing that says you're coming.
They're getting ours. They're asking for that, so they have accurate numbers.
Yeah.
Buying right beer, number of beers.
And then I just wanna tell everybody about where we are on the food truck ordinance. We are moving forward, we had a huge, wonderful, successful food truck meeting this week, yesterday, yesterday. And if, I am guessing that in 2026, Willets will have a very good, successful food truck ordinance. I don't know if we're, if we're going to attract food trucks here, you know, anymore than what we have, but it looks like we have everybody almost on the same page, just to give you an overview of what we're looking at is, no food trucks would be allowed on Main Street itself, you could be on private property if you had written permission from the owner, you could, this would apply to the south end of Willets too. And we're, at this point, we're not looking at capping the number of food trucks, if it becomes a problem, we are. And then possibly food trucks could be on the south side of Snyder Park here, park along East Commercial Street.
Tom, did we have any, any folks from Brick and Mortar that showed up at the?
We did, we had everyone who supported these. We did not have any Brick and Mortar people that were against what we're talking about.
And we talked about keeping away from residential areas also.
Yes, yes.
Food truck isn't pulled in front of your house, it just targeted business right in front of the law.
Anyway, that's what, that was, I mean, who else has a, who has an announcement or communication report? Bruce, anything?
Nothing to report.
Jared, anything?
Just that Senior Center is doing their drive-through chicken thing this Friday.
Prepaid only, please, if you're gonna do it, please order it now.
No.
You have nothing. Anything?
Your TA meeting today that was supposed to be held was canceled and last, on Monday, I was able to attend Assemblyman Rogers' special town hall here in Willet, so he was able to give an update on a number of different state issues, covered a number of different topics, including home insurance and what the state is trying to do with regards to its own funding problems. And I'd just like to encourage you, if you, if you hear about Assemblyman Rogers holding another town hall, to support local democracy and hear what people have to say. It was a lot, it was, I felt it was under attended, it was only 10, 12 people there and this is our elected representative and he had a lot of power and authority, not a lot, but he had a certain amount of power and authority inside the state and he was sharing information with this and I just felt like he was a little bit underserved by not having a lot of people there, so keep your eyes open for ways to learn about your community and I'm sure he'll do it again, too, he's on recess right now, so.
Okay, thank you everybody for being, meeting is adjourned.